Good morning, this is the public hearing of July 31st, 2018. Commissioner Bland.
Here.
Commissioner Chapin. Commissioner Chen.
Here.
Commissioner Devonshire.
Here.
Commissioner Goldblum. Commissioner Gustafson.
Here.
Commissioner Holford Smith. Commissioner Lutfi. Commissioner Shamir Baron.
Here.
Commissioner Valls.
Here. Good morning, Commissioners. The first item this morning is LP-2600, 550 Madison Avenue. The former AT&amp;T corporate headquarters building, later Sony building. At 550 Madison Avenue, AKA 550 to 570 Madison Avenue, 13 to 29 East 55th Street, 14 to 28 East 56th Street, Manhattan, Lot 1291, Lot 10. Item proposed for designation as a granite-clad postmodern skyscraper designed by Philip Johnson and John Bergi and completed in 1984 as the AT&amp;T headquarters building. Presenting is Matthew Postor.
Good morning. 550 Madison Avenue is the former AT&amp;T corporate headquarters building located in midtown Manhattan on the west side of Madison Avenue between East 55th and 56th Streets. Clad with pinkish-gray granite and crowned by a colossal pediment, it is an icon of the skyline and of postmodern architecture and marked a turning point in the history of 20th century architecture. At the public hearing on June 19th of 2018, 31 people spoke in support of designation, including representatives of the owner, council member Keith Powers, Community Board Five, Landmarks Conservancy, Dokomomo U.S., Historic Districts Council, Municipal Art Society, New York Building Congress, Real Estate Board of New York, the Society for the Preservation of the City, Association for a Better New York, 32BJSEIU, and the Building Construction Trades Council of Greater New York. Among the speakers, 20 testified that designation should allow flexibility to redesign the public spaces. Five testified that the original features at the rear of the site should be preserved, and one speaker urged LPC to exclude the annex building. The Commission has also received 11 pieces of correspondence in support of designation from the Society of Architectural Historians and others. This presentation will summarize the history and significance of the former AT&amp;T headquarters building and address the public testimony. The former AT&amp;T building was designed by Johnson-Bergi architects in association with Simmons Architects in 1978 and completed in 1984. Philip Johnson began his career as a curator at the Museum of Modern Art in New York during the early 1930s, where with Henry Russell Hitchcock Jr., he first defined the international style and introduced European modernism to a wider audience. In the 1940s, he became an architect, producing such notable modern-style works as the Glass House in New Canaan, Connecticut, and the former Four Seasons Restaurant in the Seagram Building. Later, in partnership with John Bergi, he worked on many large corporate commissions and with the design of the AT&amp;T building ushered in the era of postmodernism. The reception of the AT&amp;T building as a classic skyscraper in 1984 was a watershed moment in architectural history, prompting critic Rayner Banham to proclaim that Johnson had killed off his most famous offspring. AT&amp;T's new corporate headquarters was postmodernism's first commercial skyscraper. It was a significant part of a broad cultural critique of modernism originating with Robert Venturi's treatise Complexity and Contradiction in Architecture, published in 1966, which reacted against the doctrines of modernism and the international style. During the late 1970s, there was a revival of interest in classical detail in such works as Charles Moore's Piazza di Italia in New Orleans, Michael Graves' Portland Building in Oregon, and the AT&amp;T building. Johnson and Bergi conceived the design for AT&amp;T's new headquarters building as a statement building in the spirit of Manhattan's classic skyscrapers, which John Bergi described as a "solid with a recognizable top." In a city with many mid-20th-century skyscrapers that have glass curtain walls like the Seagram Building pictured at the left, the AT&amp;T building is entirely clad with pinkish-gray granite. This material was a key element in the building's design and was chosen to, and I quote again, evoke an earlier time and to also contrast with the neighboring IBM building, which was constructed simultaneously. Though many have ascribed sources to the building's design, including the Potsie Chapel in Florence, Chippendales-style furniture, and our own municipal building, no single work or historic period of architecture seems to have influenced the tower's design. Johnson-Bergi drew on a wide range of sources, from French-Romanesque and Italian Renaissance to early 20th-century buildings by McKimmeeden White and Raymond Hood. The AT&amp;T building's facade has a classical tripartite arrangement that rises without setbacks to a colossal, broken pediment. The base features a 110-foot-tall entrance arch flanked by groups of flat arches that recall various Italian Renaissance buildings. These originally opened to twin arcades beneath the tower. AT&amp;T did not want retail on Madison Avenue. Instead, retail was included along a covered pedestrian space connecting 55th and 56th Streets behind the tower. These connected, unenclosed, public spaces generated bonus square footage that allowed the architects to make the tower taller and more visible on the skyline. From the moment the design was revealed in 1978, the AT&amp;T building generated widespread media attention and a range of critical responses. Paul Goldberg called it "postmodernism's major monument," while Ada-Louise Huxtable confessed to having "mixed feelings" about the design, calling it "a pedestrian pastiche pulled together by painstaking, polished details." As construction began in January 1979, Johnson appeared triumphant on the cover of Time Magazine, raising a model of the structure in the air, the same year that he became the first recipient of the Pritzker Architecture Prize. As the tower neared completion in November 1982, New York Magazine devoted a two-part article to the building's construction, saying, "It brought back craftsmanship unseen since the days of the great pre-war buildings." The building opened in late 1983. Because of a federal antitrust decision against the company, AT&amp;T never fully occupied the building and leased it to Sony USA in 1991. The public spaces at the base of the building were substantially modified by Guothmie Segal and Associates in 1992 to 1994. The twin arcades that flanked the Madison Avenue entrance were converted to retail space, and the covered pedestrian space at the rear of the building was enclosed with a glass curtain wall at both ends. The alterations were made with the approval of the City Planning Commission and remain under its jurisdiction. AT&amp;T sold the building to Sony in 2002, and since 2016, it has been owned by the Olean The images that you see here show the retail infill in the base of the tower on the left, the current condition of the covered pedestrian space at the rear of the site prior to the 1992 changes. That's at the center, and a 2017 view of the annex and the enclosed, covered pedestrian space on the right. Located at the rear of the site, the separate annex building is a simple structure containing loading, parking, and service functions, as well as retail and exhibition spaces. The public passageway between the annex and the tower, covered with a curved metal-and-glass vault roof and now enclosed with curtain walls, originally contained retail kiosks to offset the lack of retail on Madison Avenue and offered visual and physical connections through the block. Research indicates that the primary focus and intent of the design was on the tower, on having a tall, iconic building in the skyline and prominent along Madison Avenue, and the annex at the rear of the site was secondary. Staff recommends maintaining the landmark site as it was calendered, and the proposed designation report identifies the Office Tower as having primary significance. Although it continues to arouse varied opinions, this extraordinary tower is one of Philip Johnson's and New York City's most recognized skyscrapers. Included in numerous surveys on the history of American architecture, the former AT&amp;T corporate headquarters building is known internationally as an important postmodern work and as a turning point in the history of 20th century architecture. The research department recommends 550 Madison Avenue is designated an individual landmark. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt and Kate, for yet another beautiful piece of research. And for my own self, let me just spend a minute or two suggesting, and then I'd love others to comment on the commission before we might take a vote. I think most projects that come before this commission for designation is beyond the memory of most of the commissioners sitting around the table. Maybe I'm speaking only for myself to say that it's not beyond my memory. I remember vividly at LaGuardia Airport hopping on a plane to go to Providence, grabbing a Time Magazine, already sounding pretty anachronistic, and finding this cover. And having kind of matured as an architect in the '60s, when modernism was definitely on the ropes, Venturi and others, as was suggested, put it there, I thought, "That's it, modernism is now dead." Postmodernism is alive and coming. We didn't realize how short a period postmodernism might be, and to some degree, how aspects of it seem embarrassing now. But this building did it. The craftsmanship, I think, and the overall integrity of the design clearly made it stand out apart from many of its imitators in postmodernism. So I'm very, very, very pleased that this has come before us. I think Matt got it right when he said this was a turning point in American architectural history. It turned again pretty quickly later, but nonetheless, this is a turning point, and this building should, in my judgment, be the apotheosis of that turning point. So would others like to say more? I'm not calling on anybody, but this is your moment. Sure, Kim.
I grew up in the '60s, so I was in the School of Architecture at City College here in the city when this was being done. And this was one of our, I guess, our case studies. I think this was a case study in steel. And we had done a case study in concrete, and that was the Grace Building. And I think after that, we did the Pei Building, and we did another building. But this one is the one that has stood up. So I have, when we did our case study, I have pictures of myself and my, you know, my compatriots in the building, going to the sky lobby and experiencing the building as it was and conceived originally, before they made all of the changes. And it was only years later, as I, you know, went out and started practicing, that they started making the changes, and I went back, and, you know, I was really disappointed. Golden Boy was gone, the lobby was changed, you had the Sony building, and you had the kind of little retail space they had there that seemed to, you know, diminish the building some. But still, as sculpture, and still as architecture, large architectural icon, it works still on the outside, even if those little pieces are still gone. But I do remember going in the building after it had been finished and taking pictures with my classmates, and it being something to look forward to, because at that time we were in a depression, pretty much. This was like the late '70s, early '80s, and we were studying architecture, and we didn't think any architecture would still be, you know, any new architecture would be designed or built, because we were in this recession, and it was one of those few lights that showed that, yes, there would be architecture still in New York, and New York wasn't dying.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Yes, Diana?
Yeah, I just want to say I think it's so appropriate, because it has become one of the architectural icons of New York City that everybody recognizes and stands out so prominently on the skyline. So it's time, I think it's great that we're doing this.
Wonderful. Any other words? Addie?
I kind of relate to Ada-Louise Huxtable's mixed feelings. And I think, and part of that, I mean, the mixed feelings has to do with the essence of the building itself, in that it is a rhetorical thing, device. It puts this whole, both preservation, authenticity project that we're all involved with sort of on its head, you know, because it is the, kind of the playing with stylistic and formal languages and the appropriation, reappropriation of them in sort of inauthentic ways, or it kind of shines a light on the whole, on all the questions that we deal with. And on some level, it makes us realize that, you know, the neo-Grec and all of the other styles that we kind of understand and hold as dear and as kind of pure are themselves and were, in the American context, rhetorical as well. So, I mean, I think that this is, the other aspect about the kind of complication with this building is that it really shows up this aspect of the sort of the star architect, the ego of the architect, and the desire to kind of dominate or to make a statement that is self-referential. So all of those things are wrapped up in this building, but because it speaks so loudly and is so recognized, it's kind of, it is due and claims its sort of recognition. So it's interesting.
Thank you. Valsco? Oh, yeah, Michael.
I'll spare you my reminiscences, but I think that, what I think of when I, I certainly am infected by the same, I guess, second thoughts about the value of the building as an aesthetic wonder. Does it rise to the level of the Empire State Building or the Woolworth Building as a piece of architecture? And then I say, "Well, you know, think of Frank Furness. And think of how one's proximity to, how people's proximity to his architecture led to its demise." And that is something that we all feel quite bad about now, with greater distance from it. So I think, as a commission, even if, as people in the design world, we might feel that the building is aesthetically not as good as or not as interesting as architecture of other periods or other architects, I think it's important for us to, there's certainly no question that the postmodern movement was very significant and affected the way America looks and the way the world looks now and for the last number of decades and probably into the future. And its ideas are certainly very much with us, even if Chippendale tops or not. You know, the same dichotomy you identified, Addie, between, you know, the rhetorical quality about, you know, the turning modernism on its head is kind of taken for granted now, and the, you know, from Gary to Zaha Hadid to any number of people, it's really no longer, it's become integrated into architecture if the style has not. So I think it's important for us as a commission to recognize and hold for the future this building, that was clearly a very pivotal building in a very pivotal style. And I would add, just on a more specific note, while the staff, I think rightly identified the retail building at the back as being of less significance, which seems to be supported by the evidence that I've heard and seen, I think that the same cannot be said for the arcades. I think it's very important that, in the future, as the building develops, we recognize that the arcades and their infill, as they currently are, was not the intent of the architect and was not the intent of the design, and that one of the most important parts of the design at the time was this very unusual base that was open, that was like a hypostyle hall or a kind of colonnade, and that that's something that should be valued, and as the building goes forward in time is something that I think we as a commission should seek to promote.
Thank you. Michael? Devonshire?
I agree with those statements completely. If we are strolling down memory lane, I remember going into that Madison Avenue arcade when the building was first open, thinking, "My God, what luxury this is. There's actually open space on Madison Avenue in a building." And my second thought was, "I wonder when it's going to get enclosed, because this is New York." The, you know, having been, having cut my licks on materials and cabinet-making and stonework, this was a pivotal building for me, to see a building come back, to see a building made with stone, with details that were amazing, with a nod to craftsmanship. For me, it has become that icon in New York City, and I think it worthy simply as being that milestone. The other thing that amazed me, and it has nothing to do with the building, was that Time Magazine cover. I remember seeing it and thinking, "Man, to be a famous architect, do you have to learn how to drape your coat over your shoulders without putting your arms in the armholes?"
Maybe, yes. Any other speakers? Okay, well then, with that, no further ado, I move that the Landmarks Preservation Commission designate the AT&amp;T corporate headquarters building, later called Sony Plaza, now 550 Madison Avenue. 550 Madison Avenue, also known as 550 to 570 Madison Avenue, or 13 to 29 East 59th Street, or 14 to 28 East 56th Street, Borough of Manhattan. As a New York City landmark, because of its special character and special historical and aesthetic interest and value as part of the development, heritage, and cultural characteristics of the city, state, and nation, as set forth in the designation report for LP-2600 dated July 31st, 2018, I also move that the Borough of Manhattan tax map, Block 1291, Lot 10, be designated as its landmark site. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? AT&amp;T is a landmark.
[laughter]
Okay, so first on the agendas, we have two public meeting items. The first is LPC Daken Number 1920286. This is 2 Eastern Parkway, the Brooklyn Public Library Central Building, an individual landmark. This is a modern classical-style library building with art deco-style detailing, designed by Alfred Morton Githens and Frank Keely, and built in 1935 to 41. The application is to amend a previous approval for the creation of window and door openings.
Good morning, Commissioners, Egbert Stolke Preservation Staff, and I present to you an application for 2 Eastern Parkway, also known as the Brooklyn Public Library Central Branch. It's an individual landmark, which is located at the northeast edge of Prospect Park. The application was first presented and approved at the public hearing on May 15, 2018. At the time, the Commissioners stipulated that the material of the proposed windows be changed from bronze-finished aluminum to true bronze. The applicants have studied the cost of making that change and are returning with information and material samples, and are asking for the request by the Commissioners to be reconsidered. The applicants have returned with a proposal in response to the Commissioners' previous requirement to maintain the bronze-finished aluminum windows in the design. Landon Brown, the architect of the project, and Heinrich Spielmann, a representative of the Brooklyn Public Library, are here to discuss the proposal.
I think we should call for a vote to open the proceeding, so they can speak. Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. You may proceed now.
Good morning, Commissioners. So thanks for having us back. I'm going to be very brief with the presentation, as it's essentially a condensed version of the previous presentation we offered. As discussed before, the Central Library Master Plan Phase II, which this presentation is a part of, involves a new public program area called the Civic Commons, which is approximately 6,000 square feet of, again, public program area within about 30,000 square feet of the overall project area. The area in question, as far as this proposal is concerned, is at the rear of the Flatbush Avenue wing. The area that we're considering is here, which is an original part of the building that currently has no openings or fenestration on it. The proposal that we are offering, again, as part of that Civic Commons project area, involves the addition of some new door and window openings. There's approximately 10 new windows and one, or two sets of doors curtting a vestibule. Again, a new public entrance at the rear of the Flatbush Avenue wing. What we discussed before, shown here in some elevations and details, is, again, just a simple sort of recessed openings for the doors and windows. What we discussed before and presented was materially to integrate a bronzed or anodized aluminum finish to approximately match the historic, original bronze details seen in the door and window frames and other details shown along the bottom. Here on the left, you can Here on the left, you can see, and I have a physical sample of this, the bronzed aluminum, which is intended to match as best it can the, again, initial, original historic bronze window and door details, but then also the bronzed, anodized aluminum window frames that were added above the area that the proposed window and door openings are being proposed for, and you can see that better here. That second and third floor addition was added in the mid-'80s, and I believe that was approximately about 10 years before the landmark designation of the overall building, which was granted in the mid-'90s. And so what we're back here to discuss today really is the implications of the Commission's previous stipulation that the new windows and doors be done or rendered in true bronze. The issue is, and I'll let BPL, or Brooklyn Public Library, speak more to this, the portion of the budget in the current project for the windows and doors allocates about $50,000 for those new window and door frames. To render those in true bronze, we would be looking at approximately a $430,000 budget. And so we're back here today to ultimately discuss the implications of that.
Good morning. I'm Heinrich Spielmann from the Brooklyn Public Library. So the bronze windows to us came, of course, came a bit as a surprise. As Landon outlined, we allocated about $50,000 for the windows and doors. The potential $450,000 potentially questions the whole project of putting a public space, public use into that space in the back of that building. I'm not totally sure what the implications are. If we do have to do it, we might, that we have to go back to our board to ask for additional funds, and I'm not sure if there, I'm not sure at this point where that would really lead to.
Okay, thank you. Other questions for either of these gentlemen speaking by the Commissioners? No. I'll ask to close the proceedings again. So moved. Second? All right, thank you. Thoughts, comments? Let me offer a couple of my own while you're gathering your own thoughts. I know we generally try to divorce cost from our proceedings. I think sometimes that's hard to do and maybe almost not right to do. We all are citizens in this great city. But I think that, you know, at the risk of suggesting windows and doors are more important than books, you can't escape that weighing a little bit here, I think, around the table. So I think, myself, think that visually, it's going to be very hard, if impossible, to tell the difference between a bronze anodized aluminum window. So I'm perfectly prepared to change what we had earlier decided for the windows. I'm thinking it's a little bit different for the door. The door is something that everybody will touch, go in and out of, and we go in and out of bronze anodized aluminum doors on almost every block of our city in typical storefronts. And I just feel like maybe in this grand building, a timeless building that'll be here forever, one hopes, maybe we should try to stick to our guns on the doors. Yes, a few fewer books, I guess that means, but I'm thinking that maybe that's an okay trade-off. I certainly hope that this doesn't jeopardize the project. That would be terrible, and I think if that does, maybe you have to come back. That's my thought. Are there's, okay. All right. Michael? Okay, all right. Then if that's our approach, Janie, can you read the?
In the matter of Docket 19-2286, 2 Eastern Parkway, Brooklyn Public Library, Grand Central Individual Landmark, a modern classical-style library building with art deco style detailing, designed by Alfred Morton Githens and Francis Keely, and built in 1935-41. The application is to amend a previous approval for the creation of window and door openings. I note that during the early 1990s, a two-story addition was built on top of the curving windowless side extension that housed the library's original branch distribution room and loading docks. I recommend approval with modification, finding that the details, material and finish of the proposed bronze-colored aluminum windows are consistent with the style and design of the building and are in keeping with those of the original remaining windows located above the first floor within the 1990s addition. However, I recommend that the entrance door, which is open and touched by the public, be made of bronze, a heavier and higher quality material than aluminum.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? All right, so it's approved with that modification. Thank you.
Okay, the second public meeting item is an application for a certificate of appropriateness of Borough of Manhattan, Docket Number 1924635. This is 405 through 409 West 13th Street, located in the Gansburg Market Historic District. It's an arts and crafts-style store and loft building designed by Charles H. Cullen and built in 1909. The application is to construct rooftop addition and to replace storefront infill.
Good morning, Commissioners. Holly Hughes, Preservation Staff. This item is 405-409 West 13th Street, located between Washington Street and 9th Avenue in the Gansburg Market Historic District. The proposal is to construct a three-story rooftop addition set back 19 feet from the street wall and replace storefront infill. This was initially presented at the public hearing on June 12, 2018, and the Commissioners were supportive of the overall height of the proposed addition and the replacement of the storefront infill. However, most Commissioners commented that the articulation material and color of the proposed addition should be re-studied to enhance the compatibility with the historic building. Some Commissioners also requested that the storefront infill be set back behind the masonry piers. In response to these concerns, the proposal has been revised, and the applicants are here to present the revised proposal.
Again, we'll have to open the proceedings in order to allow testimony. Second? All in favor? Any opposed? Proceedings are open. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. Cass Sack, Roofing and Roofing Partners. I'm going to just quickly run through the existing conditions for Commissioner Lefty and Commissioner Devonshire, who weren't here in June, just to give you a little background on the building. But I think, as Holly said, we've come back to you as so often as the case, I think this proposal is better than it was back in June. And David Cubic and Harry Kinnon will take you through the design revisions, but let me just quickly give you a sense of the building. This is a three-story store and loft building completed in 1909 on the north side of West 13th Street. Just so you can see, it's on the block between Washington and 9th Avenue. Historically, it was connected to a narrow 25-foot frontage on 14th Street that was the front of the building, and this was the back of the building. And in the 1930s, the lots were separated. And this now is a standalone building, and this is the front of the building. There is a historic canopy at the center of this four-bay expression. What's interesting and part of the sort of effort here to relook at the building has been to sort of focus on the articulation organization of the facade. So this canopy, which occupies these two bays here, really is the center line of the primary portion of the facade. There's a recess here, which is almost like a service bay, a single wide, window-wide pier that's slightly recessed from the facade. You can see that here on the upper right, this sort of brick return. It's an arts and crafts detailed facade, fine brickwork, integration of marble, and this really fantastic lattice steel canopy at the center of the facade. This is the 14th Street facade, and it's a little bit more articulation, arts and crafts detailing as it was the front of the house, let's say, historically. Photo on the left, the tax photo for the 13th Street side of the building, and a 1940s photograph of 14th Street. This is the front of the building as it was historically. And just in some block context as it exists, mid-block on the north side of 13th Street, it has a six-story warehouse building to the east and an eight-story commercial building to the west that was added to just prior to designation. The proposal that we're presenting today is a recessed addition. I think it has a better relationship to the building below, and I think more sculptural and will stand on its own in a way that the previous perhaps did not. Some context photos on 13th Street, it's an interesting block for the district's scale. On 13th Street, it's quite different than the rest of the district. It's much taller, the north side of 13th, where our site is here, is a prominent masonry street wall. But the block itself incorporates metal and glass with masonry detailing, as well as some prominent additions and infill buildings. And just a series of photographs across the top of showing sort of how the district has evolved in this post-designation phase of its development, let's say, with visible additions that sort of speak to the changing uses of these buildings. And then images across the bottom, sort of looking at the variation of scale and these sort of small-scale buildings adjacent to larger buildings. Some details of the base of the building, all the infill at the ground floor is nonhistoric, with the exception of the canopy. The proposal is to put in a recessed storefront infill. And with this, I'll have David, sorry, Harry, take you through the changes of the ground floor and those above.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cass. Hello, Commissioners. I'll be brief too, but I'll show a couple things for the benefit of Commissioners that weren't here. A perceptive Commissioner asked us why we hadn't recessed the storefront in the base before, and it was, one, we sort of kicked ourselves, because we know this typology. We know it so often, we said. It wasn't in this building, and that blinded us, I suppose. But when we sent it back, we breathed a sigh of relief too, and a thanks that that had been pointed out. And it actually proved to have more to it, and then it became a bit of a Rosetta Stone for how to treat the addition, this introduction of depth. I do want to note one thing that you see here at the end of the existing canopy, there was historically a sign on that end. We'll talk about that in a minute. Otherwise, the, what we're doing, except for the setting and the depth, remains unchanged from before. And, you know, that's what exists, this is what's proposed, and it hews, it's an interpretation of the original, but it's really great to have it back. And as Cass mentioned, this building had a front door on 14th Street, it no longer does, this is its front door now, so it's that much more important to make it up to the task. It also, this slide makes you, makes evident what Cass was talking about, the marquee centers the building in an off-center way. It's a re-centering, and it's, we've keyed on that in our language of the addition. A digression briefly, we've proposed to put a sign back, the size and height of, the length and height of what it was historically on the eastern end of the marquee. The billing department has called into question whether it's a compliant marquee sign. It is a compliant marquee sign, but the marquee itself might be a non-compliant marquee because of the change of use. It's something to be tussled out at the billing department. Well, we're asking you to approve it, but if it's not in accordance with billing department regulations, we won't do it. There's one other sign being proposed, it's a blade sign underneath the marquee. I'm sticking to my guns. So that's a digression. So we pointed out before that the site has, you always wonder if you're sending back an addition, how much you send back. The zoning sometimes tells you how much, sometimes the context tells you how much. In this case, the context spoke fairly loudly, that we have this change in material in a building that was built before it was a district, and we have a kind of change in height of the canopy, and also a little bit further back, some pipes that could use being hidden. But so we were proposing to set back our addition as much as the canopy tells, but we're also pulling it a little further forward and suppressing it, so that we're doing a sort of both-and response to the comments. The comments were, as Cass alluded to, material articulation. So I talked about the depth that we introduced in here, it was not evident here. We've taken that depth and used it to, that perception of depth, and used it to create reveals on either side, so the building, the glass of the building comes forward a bit and then recesses as it nears its sidewalls. The comment, a comment was that the articulation was kind of busy, and we've calmed it down substantially. The longer discussion was, when a building rises behind, well behind an existing facade, is it its own architecture, does it stand on its own, or is it just a sort of a reflection in some contemporary way of the existing building? And that's where we said, we can, that's a fascinating discussion, one that we had with ourselves when we designed this, and that discussion continued. And we think we've done a bit of both. It stands on its own a little bit more, and at the same time engages in a little more active dialogue with the building below. So these two center bays that correspond to the marquee are the only complete bays of the addition. The window pattern still kind of reads through in an interpreted way, but the side bays are incomplete. They start off in that plane, and they set back. And so that gives us the reveal. It also gives one an awareness of the re-centering neutrality of this as it relates to the marquee. And the last comment that we took to heart was, it seemed the tone of this, the white mullions, the glass, the tone of the glass was a little unneighborly. So again, this is a thing where we were, it stands on its own, but it also relates in a little bit more of a perceptible way. So we're doing two things. We made the mullions of bronze-toned finished metal, and in the spandrels, we sandwiched a bronze mesh into the, in between the glass, so the tone becomes something very different and relates more to the character of the brick down below. So that's our series of moves. We'll look at this two-layer curried wall facade, which is calmer on the sides and reveal-like in nature, and David will give you a few of the details.
David Cubic, SK Architects. As Harry was describing, this center section just has a few more of the details as it relates to the building below. You'll see there's sort of one additional horizontal mullion, kind of bringing back the horizontal emphasis of the spandrels and the brick building below. We're still incorporating the stone sills that kind of group the window bays, and then a stone coping in the center section only. This is just a diagram to kind of radiate what Harry was describing, where those two complete window bays are what line up with the marquee below. And there's two vertical fins, gray in color like the marquee, that mark those three piers and those two complete bays. And then the reason why this proud section feels a little asymmetrical is due to that service bay on the side, and it just gives it its own kind of slightly detached object-like reading that makes this addition feel like it stands on its own a bit more. And you can see here, that front part of the curtain wall, now it sets back 18 inches to the kind of quieter sections of the glass wall beyond. There's also, oh, let's go to the side, you can see that. And like we presented previously, the window grouping dimensionally is kind of reinterpreting what the three double-hung windows did originally. Just another view from the other side. Here you can see that we're still aligning the setback portion with that break-in material that Harry described. This is just one more view of the block long context, and here again is that marquee sign on the side like it was. Just a little bit of a close-up here on this side, where you can understand the setback a little bit better, and again, a sort of cleaner reading of that side man of curtain wall. This is a view from the east, and it is a little bit visible, but showing the alignment again with that neighboring building. again with that neighboring building. We believe you'll see just a tiny bit from the highlight. Just wanted to get to this slide where you can see a little bit better how we're incorporating this metal mesh bronze material, kind of warming up the palette of the overall window wall, departing from that silver metallic that we previously had. The horizontal mullions project just a bit more than the verticals, again, kind of reinforcing the horizontal emphasis of the brick detailing. And here you can see a little better the stone sills, emulating the stone of the window groups below and the continuous stone coping. And then the curtain wall mullions themselves are now a kind of warmer light bronze and again, just overall trying to relate the tones of the two portions of the facade. This is just that material, it'll help duplicate. This is the prismatic glass still being proposed of the transoms in the storefront, the gray for the double-digit windows and the marquee in the storefront. And here is that warm tone for the mullions with the bronze mesh. It's just one look at the details. This is a wall section through the addition, kind of calling out the bottom condition, the middle condition and the top condition. If we just look at those quickly, the bottom is just a very straightforward window wall that comes down and meets the roof pavers. The middle, which is probably the most telling, is the location where we would use this metal mesh glass, both in this panel and the panel in front of the floor slab. So on one of these panels, we'll actually get a little bit of daylight through it. And then this is the stone sills of the window groupings that run between these vertical fins at the pier locations. Now at the top of the building, this is that continuous stone coping where the curtain wall comes up and the last horizontal glass panel is also that metal mesh. This proposed building section.
David, go back to the stone detail.
Sure.
Harry Kendall speaking again. I just wanted to emphasize to the commissioners who didn't see the presentation before, the use of white marble on the existing facade and even more commonly on the former front door on Fourteenth Street is very interesting. The marble is thicker, chunkier than you would expect in an otherwise utilitarian building. It's a very quietly distinctive part of the existing building and so working these marble bands into our curtain wall addition to us was an act of reflection of that.
Thank you. Okay. Just about done? Okay, good. Questions from the commission, particularly those two commissioners who weren't here to hear it first time?
Just to clarify, so you have set back the ground floor storefront by how much now?
Eight inches.
Eight inches? The existing is what?
It's actually much deeper.
Deeper?
Two feet.
And what was your thinking about why not to take it to the two feet or how'd you get at the eight inches?
It was a sense of that it never was, that even though they, it's actually a fact that they were the justice. Historically, the piers were banded, not necessarily for their decorative quality because the stone was a stable material in which the pier holding the weight of above and the brick less stable. So, they were not so prized at the time for the decorative quality, we've come to prize them more, but because the original storefront wasn't set back to the back, we didn't want to reinterpret it that aggressively. We just said, we set back well, it's got a depth, you see the stone returning and then we honored the fact that it was, original architects didn't rebuild this one, so it's not a complete retelling of the character of the building.
I just want to, so the existing is all current infill, it's all aluminum, so that plane is not a historic depth. It's a maybe nineteen nineties pre-designation, but not a historic. So as Harry was saying, the historic images seem to show very shallow or almost dead depth, but this eight-inch depth sort of feels right for the building and gives it a little bit of depth.
Okay, good, thank you. Any other questions or we'll ask for a vote to close the proceedings. Second, all in favor, proceedings closed now. Further comments on the design? Myself, I think, we'll go, I'll just start maybe. I think I was one of the commissioners that liked this initially and could accept the massing, but thought that the addition on the top and the building below it were too disjointed. I think this architect has really, in a very sophisticated way, gone back and understood what is a typology, limited as it might be, it was a typology in the bottom three floors, the original building, that was then interpreted in a, quite an interesting now way on the top. And the coloration now, which I think is, to me, almost the best move here, really makes it, that the bronze color and the light tan color will relate very nicely to the building below it. So those are my thoughts, I think they've done a wonderful job. Michael?
Yeah, I think the addition is successful and acceptable. With regard to the signage at the storefront though, I think that the sign at the end of the awning gives kind of a false historicity. We've got, if we are to believe the drawings, there are going to be ten signs on this building. And I think that that one is kind of gratuitous and not appropriate. I can agree with the others, so.
Yeah, I agree with that point and wanted to make it, regardless of whether we can see a, find a photograph that had a sign on it as you did, to me, that doesn't mean that we need to have a sign on it today. You know, we need to make a determination of that. To me, that marquee, whether it's legal or not on the use of the building, is up to the buildings department, I suppose, but I hope that it is legal and that the marquee stays. Certainly the Landmarks Commission is going to want it to stay. And I think, to me, I would like to celebrate it and see it, particularly the sides, they're quite an elegant and unusual way of making a marquee, so I would be in favor also of just eliminating that sign. Michael, did you?
I guess, I guess I don't agree. I was not a big fan of the bulk of the building originally or of the materiality of it. I remain troubled by the bulk. I think what, for me, the bulk of the building presents itself as a substantial setback in a setback architecture, similar to the building next door, which is not, which was built before the district was created. But if you look at the majority of the building, if you look at the streetscape, what I see is buildings that have rooftop, single-story stuff, but that do not have major architectural setbacks in a kind of wedding cake-tiered arrangement, which this, because of its size, still does. I think that the choice of curtain wall is appropriate. I think that the, a lot of the articulations are fine and I think the color is better, but I still feel that it should be a story less so that it feels more like its district appropriate neighbors and less like its most immediate one. I don't have a problem with the signage.
You have a problem with the sign, okay.
There was a ton of signage in this district. I think signage and cacophony of text is what the, is what this district used to be and I'm fine with having it be that way now.
Okay, others wishing to comment?
Do something. I'm glad to see it in this iteration. It's very handsome and I feel like, I actually don't feel as though the addition is too large. I think it's set back nicely and I am so glad that you changed the materiality and the look and feel of the addition because it really does blend now. It almost looked, the earlier drawings almost looked like it was an addition that was dated. Like it would have been dated the moment the building opened. So I think it works really, really well, doesn't stick out like a sore thumb because it is housed between two other buildings. And I, whoever made the comments about the setbacks initially, it was a great suggestion and it works very, very well. And I too agree that the signage is just not necessary. It almost looks like it's slapped on there and it, I think it detracts from all your other good work.
Others? Where do we, yes, Kim?
I think I can support the changes because from all of the angles that we see the building, except straight on, up in the air, you almost read it as a two-story addition instead of the three stories. So, it fits in, it doesn't feel as large as it had seemed last time. And I think, yes, the materiality and the coloring is much better. And I think I agree with, Michael, that the sign maybe could stay. Maybe not as big, the marquee sign, but I've seen a lot of marquee signs in these formerly market districts where, you know, the same thing happens on Greenwich Streets and Soho and Tribeca, those areas where they always have these marquees. And I think some signage, not as large as it seems to be the old sign, but smaller signage, something could fit on the marquee.
Okay, good. Others wishing to speak? I want to poll us on two things, kind of the architecture and the overall massing and resolution of the, on the top, we seem to be more or less there. I know Michael Gobum is not. Where are we on the sign? No sign, no sign, no sign, no sign, no sign, no sign. Okay, I guess we're no sign. Okay, with those two, with that one change, Michael, I mean, John, we'll read it.
We're all named Michael.
Got so many Michaels here.
In the matter of docket number LPC nineteen dash twenty-four, six-three-five, four-oh-five, four-oh-nine, West Thirteenth Street in the Ganswood Market Historic District, the application is to construct a rooftop addition and replace storefront infill. I note that the building's style, scale, materials and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Ganswood Market Historic District. Further note that the Ganswood Market Historic District is characterized by waves of adaptive reuse that significantly changed the appearance of many of the buildings and provided greater visibility of rooftop features and rear walls. I recommend approval with a modification, finding that the proposed work will not damage or destroy any significant architectural features, that the surrounding streetscape has a variety of building types and heights which support the presence of a visible addition, that the proposed three-story rooftop addition in terms of its scale and massing reads as smaller than three stories due to its significant setback from the front facade thereby maintaining the character of the building and the streetscape, that the design of the proposed addition featuring a multi-story glass curtain wall framing system with interwoven mullions that align with the piers of the historic facade and with subtle setbacks at each end that reference a similar setback at the outer bay of the historic facade will be compatible with the tapestry of this arts and crafts-style building, that the materials and finishes of the proposed addition featuring bronze mesh at the glass spandrels and marble elements and bronze and gray finishes at the metal curtain wall framing system helps to unify the addition with the buff brick and marble of the historic building and metal canopy, that the proposed bulkheads on top of the rooftop addition will be only minimally visible from oblique angles at West Thirteenth Street and Ninth Avenue in keeping with similar installations found throughout this historic district, that the proposed rear facade of the addition featuring an aluminum and glass curtain wall and composite panel rain-screen cladding will not be visible from a public thoroughfare, that the configuration, materials, details and finish of the proposed aluminum storefront infill featuring four bays of display windows with profile bulkheads, double doors and prismatic glass transoms and a separate door with side light all finished black will recall the historic storefronts and will be compatible with the facade and the streetscape, and that the work will not diminish the special architectural or historic character of the building or the Ganswood Market Historic District. However, I find that the size and placement of the proposed signage at the edge of the canopy overwhelms this historic character-defining feature, therefore, I find that the proposed signage at the edge of the canopy should be eliminated from the scope of work.
All in favor? Any opposed? One opposed. You're approved, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, can I search the first hearing items and application for certificate of appropriateness? The Borough Manhattan Docket number nineteen one-four-eight-one-four, this is three, it's not Manhattan, this is Brooklyn, it's three sixty-five Waverly Avenue, Clinton Hill Historic District, an altered carriage house designed by Amity Hill and built in eighteen seventy-nine. The application is to excavate the rear yard and construct a rear yard addition.
Good morning, commissioners, this is shape and preservation staff. Three sixty-five Waverly Avenue, there's an application to construct a rear yard addition. The building is, it's a one-story carriage house with a very high attic. And this is the facade of the building, which is going to be restored under a staff-level permit. And this is the rear of the building where the addition will be constructed. As you can see, it's pretty walled in back there. And the proposed addition will be one-story and part of the rear yard will be excavated to extend the existing basement level. And this is just showing what the restored facade will look like and then this is the proposed rear facade. And the architect is here to take you through the proposal.
Good morning, my name is Markina Bakarla. I'm the architect representing the owner. The owner is also here, Anthony Moore. So our building is located in the Clinton Hill Historic District. We are, we are planning to see what the site location is, we're between Green and Lafayette on Waverly Avenue, on the west side of the street. So here is our block, our donate plan. You can see, this is our proposed addition. This is, you can see the green space and green. The existing building, the existing block is actually quite a hodgepodge of building types. Initially, it was more of a commercial block serving for the, you know, the more fancy by Washington Avenue and Lafayette Avenue. So there were garages, carriage houses, commercial buildings and a few residences on the ends. Over the years, some of these commercial buildings and garages are now also residences, but originally these were also somewhat commercial-like or serving as storage here, you know, storage for the buildings on this, on this block and on Lafayette Avenue. As you can see, across the street, there's, everything here has been demolished, has been demolished and there's thirteen-story towers, there's five towers. So the building, there's actually lots of harsh shadow lines along the street just because of these huge buildings across the street. So this is the existing building and the dotted lines show where we're proposing to put the building, those are actually the excavation lines. This is the existing building, a simple carriage house and you can see below in that rosier color, the proposed area. So our existing building, it's in pretty rough shape and even though you're not going to be looking at, it's going to be done at the staff level, we did find that there is, we did find that there is, there actually is brick beneath this and we're proposing to restore it and we're proposing, this is some of just, these pendants, the dormers are some of just a few remaining, height of historic items. As you can see, the building is wedged in here between this taller building, which was just built. This is actually a little supermarket, it's actually a really nice supermarket. And this, I guess, I suppose this is also a carriage house, but this is much later. Our building is, was built in eighteen seventy-nine in the neo-grec style, but the only thing we can really see that's neo-grec are the dormers, the dormer brackets. So you really can't see our proposed addition from the street. There's a little alleyway right here, but you wouldn't be able to see what they're proposing to do. Another shot of that same, just like head-on across the street with the thirteen-story towers. You know, you can see there's lots of harsh shadow lines, it's hard to get of this block. It's hard to get over this block. You can see some of the, some of the grocery stores, other grocery stores down the street. So our rear yard, we are proposing to restore this. There's brick underneath there, we're restoring the dormers, restoring the brick and adding a one-story addition here in the back. Existing commissions, this is the supermarket next to it. That's just painted concrete block. The neighbor's brick garage carriage house. Side lines. We're actually putting in a traditional skylight, but I don't believe that's part of this, part of this approval. This is around the block, Washington Avenue, and you can kind of, you can barely see, can't really see our, our building would be right here. You can barely see the roof poking out. This is a library just directly behind us. This is where our building is. This was taken in the winter. This is the top of our roof. And you can kind of see through, probably even through those trees, you can see the dormers peeking out, so you can't really see what we're proposing. So this is just a one-story addition with an excavation with an alleyway for access to the basement, actually to the cellar. For the, for the addition, which is just one-story, it's concrete block and traditional three-coat stucco. So three-coat stucco, it's just seven-eighths of an inch, so nothing plastic, it's just sand, lime, and portmanteau cement. As you can see, we, we did do some probes underneath the existing building, and this is what we think is there. We've found that there are original keystones, you know, roostone keystones and imposed blocks. You can also see, we found underneath there also at the gable ends, we did find roostones. We're restoring that. And for these windows, we're actually using wood historic windows, so we will have nice shadow lines in the area. This is the plan of the living area. Basically, the one-story addition is a living area and a recreation area below. This is the cellar plan, and this is the area where you see, you just go up the stairs, hop into the backyard. It just provides more light into the space. Second floor. This is the roof, the addition roof, skylight into the kitchen, the little... Section gives you a pretty good idea of what's going on with the addition and the area.
Ask a question about that? You're not going to use this as a, as a roof terrace?
No. What?
Would you have a door to it?
Well, we have, it's basically a, what it is, it's just an awning window because we need more light in order for our lighting. There's a bedroom up top, so it does, so we need more light to get approval from the building, probably. The existing building below and proposed building above. This just puts it all to context, what's going on in the rear yard there. Our building is actually quite dwarfed, compared to the neighborhood. This area is zoned as R6B, and theoretically, we could admit this building two or three stories tall, and it could have up to four residences in the building. The client is keeping this, it's just a, has a little family building. These are the colors of the building. They're all just natural colors, except for, the windows will be painted black and all trim. The stucco is a traditional three-coat stucco, which is just New York State pet sand, pine and portmanteau cement, roostones, slate, and the existing brick pile. That's...
Good. Thank you. Are there any questions? Jeanne, did you have a question, I think?
Actually, I was just wondering, with, you're doing a lot of painstaking, very, you know, thoughtful work. I'm just wondering why you chose the stucco material on the addition?
I think we wanted it to look different than the carriage house a little bit. Just, it's just, it's still a traditional stucco.
Could we go back to that rear elevation, maybe just?
Sure.
Put that on the screen so we can see there, on the right.
We're going, we're going a little modern, just a little bounce in the back. I mean, why not? Something a little different?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, good. Other questions? If not, we'll go to public testimony. Nobody signed up. Would anybody like to speak? No speakers. Community Board Two voted unanimously to approve the application. Unless there are any other questions, we'll close the hearing. A second, thank you. Hearing is closed. Comments? Fine, fine, fine. You okay, even with stucco?
I'm okay.
Okay, okay. I think it's a very nice, very nice project, actually, in a, kind of a Cinderella project. We'll, we'll have a beautiful before-and-after story here, I think. Addie?
Yes. In the matter of LPC 1914814, 365 Waverly Avenue, Clinton Hill Historic District, an altered carriage house designed by Amzie Hill and built in 1879, the application is to excavate the rear yard and construct a rear yard addition. I note that the building's style, scale, materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Clinton Hill Historic District, and I recommend approval, finding that the proposed work will not damage or eliminate any significant architectural features, that only a portion of the sidewall of the proposed rear yard addition may be minimally visible from the Waverly Avenue, from Waverly Avenue through a narrow alley between this and the neighboring building, that other buildings on the block feature comparable or larger rear yard additions in terms of their projection into the rear yard, including the adjacent building, and the commission-approved addition at 357 Waverly Avenue, and therefore, the proposed addition will not further diminish the central green space, that the one-story addition featuring a stucco facade and aluminum glass windows and doors will retain the residential scale and character of the building, and that the excavation of the rear yard will not cause the removal of any significant features of the building or the lot, and will be performed under the supervision of a licensed professional engineer following DOB requirements, and that the proposed work will not detract from the special architectural and historic character of the building or the Clinton Hill Historic District.
All in favor? Any opposed? You're approved unanimously. Good luck.
Item Two is an application for certificate of appropriateness. The Borough of Manhattan, docket number 1923656. This is 53 North Moore Street, located in the Tribeca West Historic District. This is a Renaissance Revival style warehouse designed by Thomas R. Jackson and built in 1891. The application is to enlarge an elevator bulkhead.
Good morning, Commissioners, Winnie Child Preservation Staff. This item is 53 North Moore Street, located at the eastern corner of the block bounded by North Moore Street at the south, Hudson Street at the east, Beach Street at the north, and Greenwich Street at the west, in the Tribeca West Historic District. The proposal before you today is to enlarge an elevator bulkhead to bring access up to the roof. Please note that the existing elevator bulkhead was approved by the commission in 1998. So this is the existing bulkhead that was approved in 1998, and this is the extension that they're requesting at this time. The applicant is proposing to clad the enlargement with a light-colored stucco matching the existing stucco cladding. This is the existing stucco. As shown on the photographs of the mock-up, the proposed work will be visible from public thoroughfares and views across the Holland Tunnel exit and St. John's Park. So as you go further back, you'll be able to see it. It just starts to peep out here. Here, there's a close-up. Once again, here. And here. The applicant is here to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions? We may not need to ask you to speak. I think you did a very good job in capsulizing this proposal. Nobody, nobody has questions that we need, all right, so I think we'll ask you to sit down. Anybody from the public wishing to testify? No? Okay. The Community Board One. I'll just read a couple of these things. "The issue here is complicated by frontage on the open Holland Tunnel rotary, which affords unimpeded views of almost all modifications and extensions on surrounding buildings." That was shown clearly. "And whereas the community, Landmarks Committee of Community Board One had a very close vote in deciding this application, nonetheless, Community Board One recommends that the Landmark Preservation Commission approve this application, and the vote was 32 in favor, five opposed, six abstained." Mixed, I guess, but more or less favorable. So are there other questions at all that we have as commissioners? If not, I'll ask for a vote to close the hearing. A second. All in favor to close? Any opposed? No. Hearing, hearing is closed. Anybody have a, a problem? It seems to me as if this is just one more and relatively small addition to roofs in this landscape that are visible from almost all directions. Many, by the way, were approved by this commission, and many, of course, predated the designation. So without further ado, then, Diana, would you like to read this?
In the matter of a certificate of appropriateness, Borough of Manhattan, LPC 1923656, 53 North Moore Street, Tribeca West Historic District, application is to enlarge an elevator bulkhead. I note that the building's style, scale, materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the significant architectural and historic character of the Tribeca West Historic District. I recommend approval, finding that none of the work will alter, remove, or destroy any significant architectural features, that the simple massing of the enlarged bulkhead will be in keeping with utilitarian bulkheads, founded buildings of this type, style, and age throughout this historic district, and that the enlarged bulkhead will only be seen from public thoroughfares at a distance in the context of other rooftop accretions and secondary facades, and will therefore remain a discreet presence within the roofscape.
All in favor? Any opposed? Application is approved unanimously. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to item number three. Docket number 19-17458, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the Borough of Manhattan, Block 141, Lot 7503, 170 Duane Street in the Tribeca West Historic District. A building originally built in 1835 to '36 and altered in 1984 to '85. Application is to modify masonry openings and construct a rear addition.
Good morning, Commissioners. Julianne Wissackianey, Preservation Staff. 170 Duane Street is located on the south side of Duane Street between Greenwich Street and Hudson Street, closer to Hudson Street. The building was originally constructed as a residence in 1835, '36, and subsequently converted to a hotel in the 1850s and a commercial building in the later 19th century. The building as seen today was altered in the 1980s after a substantial fire, and the commission approved the reconstruction of the front facade in 2003. The proposal before you today is to enlarge masonry openings at the front facade of the existing modern rooftop addition, and to construct an addition by enclosing the modern terraces at the fifth and sixth floors at the rear of the building. The work at the rear of the building will be visible over the secondary facade and the roof of the adjacent building, number 172. The addition will be clad in the same material as the existing side facade. I would now like to introduce the architect, Chris Olsteen, who will describe the proposal in more detail.
Good morning. My name is Chris Rolstein. I'm here with the help of TBD Architecture Design Studio to discuss this project. As Julianne said, once every Duane Street, here's our Duane Street facade. I'll take a look over a couple of different views of the project from various points around this intersection here. So basically, this is, this is the existing view here of our west lot line facade. The red dashed area, that's our distinctive one here. So what you'll be able to see from this view based on our proposed design is actually happening right up here. This is the step-back of the Duane Street, first, the six-floor Duane Street terrace, and we're proposing to enlarge the openings of an existing masonry opening there, so some larger glazed openings here, replacement of the, the doors in a very similar material as what's existing there now. And actually, you can see there's these steel lintels that are above the doors now, and we would also use that similar application above, basically just raising the header of the door window, but the application will still read very similarly to what's there now. I'm actually going to jump past this slide for a second just to review that same alteration from a different point. So right now, we're up here on Hudson and Thomas. You can see the existing here. You can almost barely see that existing steel lintel over the cornice, and you can see here, it's starting to pop up. We're basically raising it about 16 inches, proposing to raise it about 16 inches. So that's what you would see basically from public thoroughfare from those two locations on the Duane Street.
Sorry, are you raising the, the cornice line?
No, the cornice line remains the same.
Same, just, just the window?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, just those openings, better setback. I'm going to jump back to this. This is page three, if you're following on the pamphlet. This, this slide talks about what's happening on the rear, on the rear side of the triplex. So basically, here's a, here's a view, and it's a little obstructed by the trees, but you, the dashed line, you can sort of see the outline of the building there. And then as we enclose those rear terraces, you'll start to see, this is sort of just a highlighted aspect of what you will see. It's not rendered in any way, it's just sort of a highlighted portion of the volume that we're proposing to enclose. So it's a little hard to see on this view here, so you can probably see it best represented here. So basically, here's the rear yard facade. You can see the terraces all the way down, basically. This line right here is sort of an estimated line of the rear corners of all the adjacent buildings, but this dash volume here represents what we're proposing to enclose, which is the fifth and sixth floor terrace, and then there would be, the penthouse would remain the same, but it would gain sort of a penthouse terrace. Here are some proposed elevations existing north, so that's Duane Street, this is existing now, and here's our proposed enlarged openings and raised steel lintel. So we're raising it up about 16 inches. We're also, we're sort of redesigning these, proposing these get redesigned in a similar fashion actually to what's happening below, which is sort of one larger window, a more operable side window, and then this is actually a door, so this is the window, this is a walkout door here, and then it's a set of transoms over. On the, this is the rear yard, south elevation. You can see the step-backs of the terraces here, and then here, where we're closing them, it's essentially, we're bringing all of these out to the same plane as the fourth, the fourth floor there. So this terrace is being enclosed, this is being enclosed, and that entire wall is being brought all the way back to the existing wall below. And our proposal is that we would clad this in the same brick as what's happening below. And then you can see on top, we've also had some larger openings to the existing penthouse, but those are not, you can't see those right in public thoroughfare. This is an existing west elevation of that lot line, and then this shows that the closure of those terraces, and this again, this is a stuck-over masonry on the west lot line, that would be the same material, and there's no new openings in any of these, in any of this volume on the lot line. The same thing happened in this section, basically, here, you can see the terraces, and then those being enclosed. And just following through a plan, there's a terrace that's now being enclosed, these two terraces as we step down, now being enclosed at the sixth floor, and there's three terraces now from the penthouse level, which will be capped off, basically, with another terrace here. And again, seeing from the roof. This here, just to look back at the Dwayne Street facade, this is just a sort of a cut through, they hit an elevation, so you can actually cut through that terrace, and you can see what we're proposing there. And then again, from the, this is a hidden elevation through the rear yard.
Good. That's it. Thank you. Questions? No questions? Okay, then we'll go to public testimony, Barbara Zay.
Good morning, Commissioners. Barbara Zay for the Historic District Council. I just wanted to preface our statement by saying that we weren't sure if there's any visibility from Reed Street of this addition. Our comments might be affected by that. While the existing rear facade is not particularly distinguished, filling in the step backs and inserting large picture windows does not help its overall aesthetic, we would suggest replicating the design of the existing fenestration pattern of the two floors below it, which are on the same plane as the addition, so that the addition fits in better. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other person wishing to testify? No further. Community Board met and voted forty to nothing in favor of approving this application. Any further questions? I'll call, yes?
Do we have an answer to the question of the visibility from Reed?
Let's ask our staff person, perhaps, to answer that.
Staff has visited the site, there is no visibility at all of the rear facade from Reed Street. The only visibility is the previously mentioned, over 172 on Dwayne.
Right. Thanks for the confirmation. Okay, so we'll close the hearing with a vote to approve. A second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No. So the hearing is closed. Comments? Pretty straightforward. Forty members of the community board thought it was pretty straightforward, too, I guess, so, all right. Seems like it is for us as well. Kim, do you want to read that, then? Thank you, thank you.
In the matter of 170 Dwayne Street, Tribeca West Historic District, application is to modify masonry openings and construct a rear addition. I note that the building's scale, stuff, materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Tribeca West Historic District. I recommend approval, finding that the work will not damage or eliminate any significant architectural features of the building, that only the upper portion of the alterations on the front facade of the penthouse will be visible from public thoroughfares at selected views and at a distance, that the enlarged masonry openings at the front of the existing rooftop penthouse will remain compatibly scaled to the facade and regular in form, thereby helping the alterations to remain harmonious secondary presence at the building, that the simple design and gray finishes of the proposed metal lintels and transoms will be compatible with the design of the modern penthouse and harmonious with the color palette of the building, and will not draw undue attention to the modifications, that the rear facade and overall massing of the rear of the building were extensively altered prior to the designation of the Historic District, and that the building is not part of a continuous row. Therefore, the construction of the proposed addition will not obscure any identifiable vestiges of the original rear facade, design, or the historic massing of the building or adjacent buildings, that the proposed rear addition will only be obliquely incidentally visible over a low building on Dwayne Street, and that the size of the proposed addition in relation to the overall size of the building will not overwhelm the building or alter its typology.
All in favor? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No opposed? Application is approved. Thank you.
Next is item number four, docket number 19-20777, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the Borough of Manhattan, block 1148, lot eight, 163 West 76th Street in the Upper West Side, Central Park West Historic District. A Renaissance Revival-style row house designed by Henry Cook and built in 1892 to 93. Application is to construct rear yard and rooftop additions.
Good morning, Commissioners. Karina Bishop, Preservation Staff. The application before you is 163 West 76th Street, located between Amsterdam and Columbus Avenues in the Upper West Side, Central Park West Historic District. The application is to construct a one-story rooftop addition, a four-story rear yard addition, and to enlarge and reconstruct the existing modified top floor of the row house. All will feature brick cladding, punch window openings, and multi-light window assemblies. The proposal also includes installing air intake vents at the rear yard. The applicant, Michael Mazzella, is here to present.
Good morning. Michael Mazzella. This presentation, let me get this going, starts off from the existing building, and we looked at it originally, and noticed that these buildings do not align. So what we tried to do with the rear addition is do a series of step backs to actually make it blend in and make the massing work. We didn't want to do one continuous buildup on the back, so as you'll see, let me get back over here, there's a series of setbacks, so that way, these elevations don't match, but the setbacks kind of blended in. That is our intent and goal. Now, from the street view, there's no visibility of our addition to the rooftop. In the massing over here, you'll see, in the netting, there was a proposed chimney at one time, but after our presentation with the board, the community board, that chimney's since been removed, so this section right here is no longer presented at all. On the elevations, there's an existing bump out that was done in the 80s, and what we've done is we've added this rooftop addition, and there's a penthouse, on the penthouse roof itself, it's not really a penthouse, it is, a bit more by definition, we've added glass railing to even make it more invisible, to reduce the massing as much as possible, because that was one of the community's concerns. And the rear addition, as I mentioned, you can see that there's several underlying factors over here, that buildings go back and forth, not just the bump outs themselves, but balcony, setback, another balcony. So what we've done is balcony, 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 another setback, so we've, instead of building one straight solid mass, we've actually provided those setbacks. Another thing we've done is we've tried to reduce the openings, as we went on, we've worked with the community to reduce the size of the windows as they step back. In fact, the original design carried these windows all the way up. So, try to make it as private and as fitting into the shape of the dome as possible. Our biggest concern was on the fifth floor, knowing that the board likes to keep the top elevation to match, but we have a problem with that, because we have two different elevations, one back over here and one back over here. The building to our right, all right, what we've done is we've kind of matched in between that. The building to our right has a four-foot setback, a seven-foot setback at the upper floor. What we've done is aligned this floor right here, I'm sorry, the upper floor of the top floor of the adjacent building, and setback forty-eight inches on both floors, so we're trying to match both of them at the same time. So some, here's the existing building, there's a four-foot setback on the lower floor, and we are setting our back four feet over here. I'll show you that better in the elevation, in the model of it. Back over here. So this is the proposed elevation. This piece lines up with this. This four foot over here now is the same four foot over here. So, trying to work both ends, so these lines of houses on this side are farther out, and these are a little bit farther back, as they step back. And the rooftop addition, as I said, we have glass all the way atop, it has a rooftop terrace, all the mechanical equipment is now in the cellar and venting through a grill, two grills below grade, so there's no AC units being showed any time. That, in a nutshell, is our proposal.
Could you go back to the site plan that shows the other buildings in this area's extensions? The color of one?
The color of one? Yeah, yes. What I was saying is that these step back a little bit more, and these project out a little bit more than ours.
We've got that. So the blue is what?
The blue is three stories.
And yours is?
This is the fifth story and the fourth story.
Any other questions? No questions. We'll go to testimony at this point. Three minutes each. Mark Lee. No, you testified back there. Yep, thank you.
Thank you for hearing me. Thank you for hearing me, and the other people in the neighborhood that are here to voice our strong opposition to this gut renovation of an 1892 building. In every way, it is an architectural overreach that does not correspond to both the neighborhood and also the block. The architect has, during the community board meetings, made minor cosmetic changes, but none of these changes in any way deal with the primary concerns of the neighborhood about this gut renovation. A major concern is the rooftop addition. This penthouse is an architectural mismatch for the neighborhood that block a large amount of sunlight for at least a dozen different families. And what is the penthouse for? According to the architect, the penthouse is for a pool table. No one is ever going to live there. Now, who knows what it will be used for in the future, but we are being asked to approve a redesign that is going to block light and change an 1892 building, so that the owner can play pool on the roof. Ann Marx is here to defend the past and to think about the future, and for those reasons, I implore you to vote against this architectural overreach. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Sheri Scribner.
I'd like to voice my strong opposition to the proposed renovation at 163 West 76th Street. While the front of the building has attempted to blend in with the surrounding neighborhood, the roof addition, back facade, and courtyard renovations will significantly change and damage the fabric of the rear yard that many neighbors share on 76th and 77th Street. My largest objection is to the project's out-of-scale massing, particularly the rooftop addition, which will make the building significantly taller than its neighboring buildings. This large mass unfairly blocks the light and air of its neighbors for the sole purpose of creating a pool table room. In addition, allowing this building to be significantly taller than its neighbors would create a dangerous precedent that has the potential to irrequably harm the character of the courtyard that is shared by all. In addition to the inappropriate massing of the building, the proposed excavation of the cellar for the mechanical equipment risks damaging the roots of the trees in the neighboring courtyard. The trees in the courtyard have stood for decades and are a shared amenity enjoyed by all of the neighbors. These trees cannot be easily replaced. While not visible from the street, these trees are omnipresent to the residents who share the courtyard space, and the loss of any tree would significantly change the character of the courtyard. Finally, the rear facade of the proposed renovation is out of keeping with the character of the neighboring buildings. The proposed large marden windows will create significant light pollution in the evening. In addition, the building out of the facade on the west side of the property, as you can see in that image, is out of character with the alternating stepping back of the neighboring buildings, and will block the windows of the neighboring building on the west side. For all these reasons, I ask that the committee reject the proposed renovation. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Next is Ron Miller.
If I could just make a point, the commission's jurisdiction is limited to the appropriateness of the proposed changes, so while it's understandable, there's concern by the neighbors of loss of light and trees and so forth, those are matters that aren't before you. It's the appropriateness of the proposed change.
Or use, I might add as well. Thank you. So, Ron Miller.
All right. My name is Ron Miller. I live on West 77th Street in a building that would, that looks out over this renovation. I'm on the Upper West Side, this is a neighborhood where we had lots of development in the last decade or so, many playgrounds and sidewalks are in the shadows much earlier in the day because of all these buildings being put in. I can see my observation is the same as my neighbor's, namely, my window is, I'm going to have a substantially reduced view of the skyline. It's going to be darker, a little bit, and this is something that is going to affect, you know, not only my apartment, but that of my neighbors. So, you know, I live in a Landmarks Preservation District. I was on the call-up board for a decade. We were always turning to the commission for advice as far as what kind of bricks to use for our facade renovations, what kind of windows to use when we replace the windows. This seems to be a substantial change in terms of the rooftop addition that really is out of character with the rest of the neighborhood, and so I'm asking you just to reject this part of the design. Thank you.
Thanks. Next is Barbara Zay.
Barbara Zay for the Historic District Council. HDC finds the cumulation to be overwhelming to this house, the row interior donut, appearance of a small apartment building rather than a 19th-century row house. With such a substantial proposed rear yard addition, HDC finds the additional living space proposed for the rooftop addition and the resulting elevator to be excessive. We also found the terrace design of the rear yard addition to stand out too much within the context of the row, and would suggest eliminating the fourth floor bump out. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Anna Siftar.
Good morning, Commissioners. Anna Siftar for Landmark West. The Landmark West Certificate of Appropriateness Committee finds the extent of this expansion, the expansion proposed in this application out of character and out of scale in relation to the surrounding historic neighborhood. The applicant's own presentation works against them with elevations that depict a bulky, boxy rooftop addition and a barrage of windows cluttering a massive rear facade. Although the applicant has set back the proposed rooftop addition significantly, a glance along the block shows the nearly complete consistency of four-story buildings in a row of which 163 West 76th is a part. There is only one interruption to that consistent roofline of a comparable size, and that is set back to the very rear of the house. We ask that the applicant reconsider if their addition is a necessary intrusion to an otherwise intact roofline, or if perhaps it could be reduced in bulk. We also find reason to be concerned with the proposed rear addition. Best practice would retain the punched window openings at least at the top floor of the rear facade, something entirely absent here, as the windows have become doors. Furthermore, the applicants are proposing to remove the distinctive dog leg at the rear, a move that we oppose. We urge the applicant to seek ways in which they might bring the proposal for their historic home into better dialogue with their surrounding neighborhood and with that neighborhood's history. The Landmark West Certificate of Appropriateness Committee recommends denial of this application if such changes are not made. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to testify? Anyone else wishing to testify? Community Board Seven recommends approval of the rooftop addition, urges the applicant to reduce the overall height of the rooftop addition by one foot. Okay. Any other questions by the Commissioners? Yes.
I just wanted to make sure I didn't miss it. Is there a block site plan that shows the comparative? Oh, there it is. Where is that?
That's all that exists.
So there is really just one other rooftop addition that's on your block, right?
I'm sorry, and your question is?
I just wanted to, I got it. Page 15.
You got it.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, yeah.
I'm a little confused about what exists. Is that, is that in the existing condition, is the top floor taller than the other adjacent buildings?
This is taller right now.
Right. It's taller, but not as another story, simply as a taller fourth floor.
It's a clear story that actually, it's almost a four and a half at this point right now.
At the fourth floor?
At the fourth floor.
It's like 10 feet or more, 12 feet interior?
Yes. I also wanted to point out, there is an error in this plan. This face right here actually should align with that face, and I wanted to point that out here before. This is the actual plane that we want to build it, but it should be aligned with this face, just so you're aware.
As existing.
Yes, as existing.
And therefore, what?
This is where it's, where we're proposing it to be.
You're bringing it out then?
And we are bringing it out.
Slightly.
Right. We want it to align with this face here.
Uh-huh, okay. Thank you for that clarification.
The addition that you're proposing on the roof is how much taller than the current height of the building? Is it in addition, is six feet?
It's with the floor structure itself, up to the top of the floor, it's about six feet higher. That's all it is.
With the floor, sir?
With the floor. From this point here to this point here, the change in elevation from this corner of this roof is about four, about six feet.
Thank you.
Okay. Would you like to comment on any of the testimony?
I would, if it's all right.
Of course.
There's several comments made about the trees. We worked very diligently. We hired arborists, and we've talked to the owners about the trees. There's one tree that sits right here. We can see that tree in this location right here. There's another tree, we met with the owners of 161 and talked specifically about it. The tree they're concerned about is in this position that hangs over onto our property, which we'd like to save. And I advise them that no matter what excavation we do, their bedrock is two feet below the grade of this location. So when we do this excavation or any excavation, we may damage the roots. But the owners actually talked about replanting a tree if we have to and try and do anything we possibly can to salvage the trees. In regards to the light, blocking light, this is the looking south, the south face elevation. We've stepped back the building to make sure that we do not step into anybody's light. We've actually produced a minimal exposure. As I mentioned before, we could have built up, well, we didn't want to build up, we did want to keep in that plane, to make sure that we did as minimal as we could to affect the natural light into the donut itself. And finally, the window openings, we've reduced the size of the window openings to as much of a bump out or a knock out window as we possibly could. And there's been play with these railings. We had them solid masonry railings so that we wouldn't have as much natural light solution. And then we were later advised by the community board to make them glass again. So we've played back and forth. We met with the community board three times, met with the neighbors, trying to meet all of their needs. So the owner has given me direction to try and work for the board as much as possible. And that was hire an arborist to make sure that during the construction we'd save the trees, reduce the window size, and make this blend in as much as possible.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. All right, at this point.
One final question.
Yeah, sure.
This is probably for staff. Question is whether it's visible from any public vantage point at all.
The previous design was all from Amsterdam Avenue. It's been revised, but there's no visibility.
So no visibility from public thoroughfare?
There was previously slight visibility of a railing from this near Amsterdam, but it's.
Okay, thank you. Could we close the hearing at this point with a vote? A second? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, the hearing is closed. What do we think? Michael?
I, I think that this is well within the bounds of the kinds of things that we've approved in the past. I think that the rooftop addition causes me a little bit of concern because I cannot see a significant pattern of them being on this block, but the block is a varied block and it doesn't have any visibility. So I don't, I wouldn't view this like I would view, let's say, a relatively pristine block in Prospect Heights or something where, where it's kind of, it's very much in its original state. So even that doesn't particularly trouble me. I think the, because of its particular arrangement within its row, I'm not even particularly bothered about the variation of the plane of the top floor, which we normally try to leave as was to create or to hold on to the unifying quality of a row and of the donut. I feel that here, because it's in a transitional spot between rows of continuously built buildings, I think that the modifications there are appropriate too. I really don't see anything to, that would be of a concern to me.
Okay, thank you. Diana?
I, I actually feel like this is a little outsized between the full width addition going up as high as it does, even though it's not that much in certain pieces of it. You know, my feeling about things we've approved before is more that the combination of the rooftop and then the amount of full width addition on several stories is, doesn't, doesn't square very well with the rest of the block in terms of, they're mostly being L's. It's not a pristine block, and I don't have a problem with the, with some addition. I just feel like, for me, this is a little too much, the combination.
Okay, too much high, too much in the back, or just generally too much? We're just trying to, if there's a?
Yeah, I understand. I think I would be, I think I'd like to see the, the full width addition not go be, not go as high as it's going, and then I could go along with the rooftop, I guess.
Okay.
That's, I think I'm more troubled by that.
All right, maybe others will articulate. Addie, or John?
I guess, I mean, we don't often require that dog legs stay that way, but it seems that that's really a dominant, or the majority of the buildings seem to have a dog leg rather than, than the full width extension or addition. So I think that that's what's making it so, as Diana was saying, it's both wide now and tall. So I think it's the, it's the both that's the, that makes it difficult, even though I sort of agree with Michael that it's not, you know, we've approved things like this before, so it's not egregious. I think that what Diana proposed, which is that potentially the third floor, I don't know if this is exactly what you said, that the third floor is set back.
The fourth, you mean, the fourth?
No, I mean the third. Oh, maybe you're right.
The fourth.
Is it the fourth? No, see, now I'm confused. No, that, that.
Up to the fourth.
No, that we, that we.
Point to it, actually.
Maintain the height of the dog legs, whatever that is.
Do you want to?
There.
Yes. Yeah, right. So if that's, you know, set back, then maybe both the full width as well as the, as the addition on the roof wouldn't, you know, feel so sort of overbearing on the block. I'm not, I'm not sure. I also, I think also, do we absolutely need the, as Fred, you always say, the glass railings call a lot of attention to themselves and are certainly not invisible? Do we really need that up there? I think not.
As opposed to picket rail or something?
Picket rail or, or not accessible, unless it's required that it be accessible?
Well, I think these are usable terraces, so you're gonna, yeah.
All right.
Okay, other thoughts? Kind of have?
So there's no visibility?
There's no visibility at all from?
I actually, in your recommendations, of the setback, of the, I think that is the point, the point of the thing.
Okay, others?
Yes, yeah.
Want a setback to this location here?
Two. Can anyone?
That would, that would be all right with me. I think John has a.
I think it's appropriate as-is.
All right, few more. Yes. As-is, yeah.
And as-is.
As-is, you're, I think I am too, as-is. You know, I just want to point out that I think, I think the applicant's graphics on this right here are doing a disservice. I'm not sure it's so out of sync with the context, actually. It's very clear now what's his and what's the neighbor's, but I don't think it's quite as out of context as this drawing would make it appear. And the fact that there's already an extension up on the existing roof and only six more feet and none of it's visible, I don't quite understand how that produces shadows on the neighbors either. So I think I could be okay as-is. And I think we have the votes, do we? Seems like it, okay. All right, then, Michael, that's yours.
Regarding 163 West 76th Street in the Upper West Side, Central Park West Historic District, the application is to construct rear yard and rooftop additions. I note that the building's style, scale, materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Upper West Side, Central Park West Historic District. I recommend approval. Finding that the proposed work will not eliminate or damage any significant architectural features of the building, the proposed rooftop and rear yard additions will not be visible from any public thoroughfare, that the proposed rear addition will not project into the rear yard further than the existing rear yard extensions within this block and therefore will not diminish a cohesive central green space, that the design and materiality of the rear addition featuring brick cladding, multi-light metal case and windows and doors, metal railings will maintain the block, building's residential scale and character and is in keeping with the character of the rear facades within the block, that the proposed rooftop addition in bulkhead will be set back from the primary rear facades and therefore will maintain a sense of the building's original massing, that the design and materiality of the rooftop addition featuring gray stucco cladding will help to differentiate the addition from the building and be consistent with materials found in rooftop additions in this historic district, that the installation of the exhaust vent at the rear yard will mitigate the need for potentially visible rooftop mechanical units and will not diminish the central green space, and that the proposed work will not detract from the special architectural and historic character of the Upper West Side, Central Park West Historic District.
All in, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? One opposed. Okay, thank you. You're approved. The application is approved.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Commissioners, next up is item number five, document number 19-21829, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan, block 1227, lot 33, 410 Amsterdam Avenue in the Upper West Side, Central Park West Historic District. A Renaissance Revival-style tenement building designed by Charles C. and built in 1895. Application is to replace storefront infill.
Good morning, Commissioners. Winnie Chal preservation staff. This item is 410 Amsterdam Avenue, located at the west side of Amsterdam Avenue between 79th and West 80th Street in the Upper West Side, Central Park West Historic District. The proposal before you today is to replace modern storefront infill at the first floor. Please note that the existing modern storefront infill was approved by the commission in 2003. This cannot be reviewed at staff level because the proposed storefront is operable. The applicant is here to present the proposal and answer any questions.
My name is Matt Markwitz. I'm the architect on behalf of the owners of 410 Amsterdam and the operator of the restaurant for the proposed modification to the existing storefront. We're proposing to change the existing storefront from where it sits now, essentially for the entrance that has to be relocated. We're reconfiguring the interior of the space, and we're shifting the entry from the center bay to the left, which is the south portion of the existing structural openings. The storefront itself is wood with glass infill, and we're proposing to match that style with panels and operable panels similar to what is there presently. That's essentially the change that we're seeking in your acceptance rule. Other than that, there's some changes to the existing front of the building. The storefront is the only modification that we're seeking.
Okay, thank you. So again, I think the only reason this is before us is because it's operable and, but more or less the same look. Any questions? No? Wait a minute, wait a minute. There is public testimony. We'll go to Anna Sifter.
Good morning, Commissioners. Anna Sifter. The Landmark West. We appreciate that there is no. Historically appropriate material choice. Although the openable panels and the new door proposed differ from the existing, the nonexistent storefront setup, we understand that the needs of storefront use of wood and glass and the continuation of the current subdued color palette will help keep this addition in harmony with its surroundings. The Landmark West Certificate of Appropriateness Committee recommends approval of this position. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Anybody else wishing to testify? No further testimony. Community Board Seven recommends approval. Any further questions? We'll close the hearing with a vote. A second? All in favor, I guess we, all right, thank you. Okay, this is really straightforward. We ready to proceed to, okay, I think it's Michael Devonshire.
In the matter of LPC 1921-829, a Renaissance Revival-style tenement building designed by Charles C. and built in 1895, an application to replace storefront infill, I recommend approval. Finding that proposed work will not change, damage, or eliminate any significant architectural features, that the new infill will replicate aspects of historic ground floor infill at buildings of this type, style, age in terms of overall proportions, predominance of transparency and basic compositional elements, and will return the storefront closer to its historic height. That the solid panels at the bottoms of the doors will recall bulkheads, which are typical features found on storefronts and buildings of this age, style, and type. The temporary voids, which will be created when the bifold doors are open, will be moderate in size and will not disrupt the solid-to-void ratio at the building's base. The proposed painted finish for the storefront infills in keeping with the historic color palette of a building of this style and age, and the cumulative effect of the proposed work will enhance the special character of the, and historic character of the building and the historic district.
All, sorry, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No opposed. Applications approved. Thank you.
The next two items are going to be read in separately but presented together. The first is item six, document number 19-28148, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan, block 1408, lot 30. 175 East 73rd Street, the 175 East 73rd Street Building Individual Landmark. An Italianate-style row house built in 1860 with the basement floor significantly altered in 1896. Application is to modify the existing rooftop addition, install mechanical equipment, and replace windows. Item number seven, document number 19-27789, also a certificate, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan, block 1408, lot 31. 177 to 179 East 73rd Street Building Individual Landmark. A Bozar-style garage building designed by A Bozar-style garage building designed by Charles F. Hoppen constructed in 1906. Application is to construct rooftop and rear yard additions and replace a garage door with new glass and metal infill.
for 175 East Seventy-Third Street and 177, 179 East Seventy-Third Street. It's a rowhouse and a garage building, both individual landmarks located between Lexington Avenue and Third Avenue in Manhattan. The application is to install new rooftop and rear yard additions at both buildings, of which the rooftop additions will be visible from the southwest at East Seventy-Third Street and north at East Seventy-Fourth Street. At the garage building, the entrance infill will be replaced and a new canopy will be installed. At the east and west facades of the garage building, selective brick infill will be replaced with glass bricks to function as windows. The application is part of a comprehensive plan to connect the two buildings at the interior for use as a synagogue and community house. Commissioners, please note that the replacement of the garage doors no longer consists of new glass and metal infill, as mentioned in the agenda, but instead a wood door will be installed in combination with restoration of the granite base. Rabbi Jeremy Rosen of the Persian Jewish Center of New York City will introduce the application first to you, followed by Jay Siegel, attorney of the project, and Jason Long, the architect.
Mr. Chairman, Members of the Commission, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Jeremy Rosen. I have been the rabbi of the Persian Synagogue for the last ten years. The Persian Jewish community is the oldest Jewish community that has been resident in one geographic location for 2,500 years. But Persians have been moving and moving to New York for quite a while. The biggest impetus came in 1978 after the Persian Revolution, and a group of our members, we don't have members, a group of our community got together to set up a little synagogue where they could carry on these ancient, specific Persian traditions. For the last 32 years, we have rented space in a big synagogue, Park East. It's a small little space. There isn't room for us when any time we get more numbers, we have to relocate upstairs to a gymnasium and pray on a basketball court. And we have been desperate to find a place where we can offer, instead of occasional boutique services, a proper full-service synagogue. Almost all our members live on the Upper East Side, and most of them walk to synagogue on Saturdays, which is why we have found it so difficult to find somewhere that would suit us and enable us to expand. I have to say, after 50 years in the Rabbonot on four continents, this Persian community is about the nicest group of people I've ever had any contact with. They're amenable and ecumenical and open-minded and very, very generous, and they will make every effort to fit into the community and to do what needs to be done, to make sure we are good neighbors and that this will enable us to fulfill our spiritual mission. So I look to you for support and help, and thank you for listening to our presentation.
Thank you.
Commissioners, my name is Jay Siegel. I represent the applicant. Just want to say a word about the zoning issues. This block is in an RAB zoning district. The garage that was explained to you is illegal, non-conforming use. As you would expect, synagogues are a legal use in an RAB zoning district as a community facility. We are going to apply, should the Commission approve our envelope, we're going to apply to the Board of Standards and Appeals to be able to extend further into the rear yard than the zoning resolution would allow. All issues about appropriateness and about the need to do so, the programmatic need to do so, would be before the Board of Standards and Appeals as they review the application on the basis of what we will explain to them as our programmatic need. This presentation will not talk about the variance, except when you see the rear yard extension, some of it requires a variance.
Got it, thank you.
My name is Jason Long. I'm with the architecture firm OMA. We're a firm that's an international office, originally founded in the Netherlands. Currently, we're working here in New York and have been here for the last 20 years. We have a history of working within existing structures, including landmark structures. Here in New York, we also completed the interior of the Prada store and the Historic District of Soho. We also have a history of building buildings connected to historic structures, really throughout the world, including the recently completed Prada Foundation in Milan, and also doing gathering spaces. Although we've never done, strictly speaking, a synagogue, we have done a number of gathering places for religious communities like the Wilshire Boulevard Temple and others. And so we're very excited about this opportunity for both ourselves and for the Persian Jewish Center. You heard from the rabbi that they're currently located here at the Park East synagogue, renting space there, and then moving to this site within the Lower East Side on a street that's a historic, has historic carriage houses on both sides of the street, together with townhouses, many of which have been converted, of course, to other uses, and on either end of the block, there are a number of larger now co-op and condo buildings. These are the two properties we're looking at, a townhouse at 175 East Seventy-Third Street, it's from 1906, and then the parking garage building from, oh no, sorry, townhouse is 1860, the parking garage is 1906, that's 177 to 179. You see them outlined here. These are the two buildings here, so 175 and 177 to 179. Typically, you don't think of a parking garage as being an appropriate building for a new spiritual home, but this parking garage is actually incredibly exceptional in its appearance. Of course, it's Bozart's design and also its robust construction on the interior and these kind of soaring windows that cover three floors of the building from the second to the fourth floor of the current garage. Here you see photos of the building as it stood, kind of shortly after its completion, let's say, when there were a series, these two double wooden doors that formed the main entry, flanked by windows on either side, and then windows adjacent to them, and then the rest of the structure has a series of, again, windows covering the second to the fourth floors. Here you see the building today. Of course, it's been modified a number of times over the years. Most notably, the entrance was widened here, as you see, in order to allow larger vehicles to enter into it, and the transom here over that entryway was extended to cover kind of rolling coiled garage door, in addition to kind of various elements of signage. Here you see tax photos from 1940 and 1980 of the townhouse building. There have been a number of adjustments also to its facade, most notably here, the introduction of a through-wall air conditioning units, the introduction here of a kind of upper-level railing, and also the replacement of all of the upper-level windows with windows that don't conform to these arched windows and that are all shorter than the original windows. There's a kind of brick infill here to accommodate that. And then here, 1940 and 1980 of the parking garage structure, again, here you can see the adjustment, so it's a bit dark in this image, but of the main entryway. Here, again, we're looking to transform both of these buildings into the new Persian Jewish Center, transforming it from parking into kind of main sanctuary space together with other support areas. All of those adjustments are taking place within the existing floors, effectively, of the structure, so that they align still with the fenestration on the front, Seventy-Third Street elevation of the building. Here you see an elevation of both buildings as they exist today, and then here as we are proposing them. In essence, all around the building, we're really proposing a high-quality restoration of both buildings, with some adjustments to allow the additional light in and to create a new entryway for the building. So, for example, we're looking to remove the through-wall air conditioners, replace all of the windows within the townhouse buildings with windows that match their original proportion and divisions, including restoring the glass portions of these arched windows here on the third level. In addition, on the townhouse building, we're looking to extend an addition, a later-date addition that you see here, over to meet the garage building. We're looking at adding a small glass skylight here over a stair that will connect both buildings, and there's also a small mechanical equipment on top of the roof and also a rear roof of the townhouse building. We're also looking to restore, and I'll show you images of this in a second, the areaway to its kind of original rusticated appearance, and also restoring and repairing as needed elements of the facade. And that applies also to the brickwork on the garage building, where we'll again be kind of restoring and repairing as needed to match the original, and also replacing and repairing as needed the windows and framing of the building with light to match. So for wood framing, which is what exists here, we're going to be replacing that with wood. We're proposing a new door, a set of double doors here, both made out of wood. I'll show those in some more detail in a minute, and to restore the original windows on either side of it, and also to extend, again, the kind of stone base at the bottom of the building. In addition, we're looking to restore the kind of gabled roofs here on the top of the building, and there are a series of additions on the rooftop of this garage building. One, an 11-foot-high weather-copper-clad mechanical room. Here, a small stair bulkhead that's to be clad in glass to allow one of the egress stairs to extend up to the rooftop. And then in the rear of the building, two additions, one brick, one clad, as the original car elevator is, in corrugated aluminum, to allow a core effectively to extend in the rear of the building. Here, again, you see the entryway as it was originally configured for the garage building, and then here as it exists today. Of course, there have been many adjustments, small and large, to this entryway throughout the years, including the kind of parking signage and the addition of this lower-level transom to cover the coiled garage door, mirrors for the door, et cetera, et cetera. We're looking, as I mentioned, to really restore this entryway, although use it as an opportunity to also convey the culture of the Persian Jewish Center at the same time. So really extending the stone base to its original proportions, providing two new wooden doors with a pattern that, again, conveys the Persian Jewish Center's heritage while also keeping in line with the original design to some extent. That heritage, of course, has a rich tradition of decorative motifs and patterns. We don't want to simply recreate that, but we do want to, in a contemporary way, make reference to it. So we're looking here at carving into an oak door, oh, sorry, a walnut set of double doors, this pattern, just carving at the base and then creating a series of small glass inserts at the top to allow some light in. In addition, we're looking to replace these windows and use a similar or the same filigreed metalwork that you can see on the original buildings, the original windows today. As I mentioned, even the materiality of this, we're trying to draw upon a kind of heritage of Persian architecture. And then above these, the door, there's proposed a canopy across the entire entryway, extending out seven feet from the facade to provide some weather protection. We're proposing that as a brushed aluminum, trying to keep it as minimalist effectively as we can, so that it doesn't compete with the rest of the ornamentation on either the existing facade or the doors themselves. And here you see that canopy shown here, simply supported and as thin as we can manage to get it. We're also proposing some minimal uplighting within the doorway itself, and then also from the canopy and the kind of upper level here, just subtly lighting the facade. And then here you see another view of that doorway with the canopy here shown a bit more clearly. The townhouse building, as I mentioned, we're looking to restore this area here, which has been changed over the years. There's an adjacent structure, two, a couple doors down, at 171 East Seventy-Third Street, that's identical in its configuration, although more of the historic elements remain there. And so we're using that as a kind of model for how we're treating this new areaway. And then here you see both buildings together as they exist today, and then here a rendering of the proposal. The east facade of the garage building is not particularly visible, but there is a ramp that accesses the parking, underground parking for the adjacent residential building, and you can, within that ramp, see, and there is some light that gets into this kind of small, effectively alleyway between the two buildings. We're proposing here to restore the existing brickwork and repair it as needed, and also to try to address a scar that exists on the side of the building from a previously adjacent townhouse. So you can see that here. So we're looking to remove this remaining brickwork from that townhouse and repair the brick behind it. So here you see a view of that condition today. Again, here's this kind of scar element from the townhouse that was there previously, and then here, as we're proposing, again, restored with the scar removed. Here, we're looking to provide some quite subtle windows, actually, by inserting glass bricks, you see an example here, into the existing brickwork. So here the elevation as it exists today, and here as we're proposing, with a series of glass bricks interwoven into the existing brickwork in order to allow some light to filter into spaces of the sanctuary and other adjacent structures. And this, again, is a way we're trying to subtly refer to kind of history of Persian And here you see a kind of more detailed view here where these glass bricks would really be integrated in within the existing brickwork. And then here, an elevation and section in a bit more detail. There would be an inner light within that will create the base, the real kind of weather enclosure, and also give us an opportunity to modulate that light, any light that would come from inside the building to the outside. Here on the west face of the garage building, we're proposing, again, to repair and restore the existing brickwork, and also to add two smaller versions of a similar window system here with the integrated glass bricks. Oh, I should linger here for a moment. So there's a number of things to point out here on this elevation. Again, here you see the 11-foot-high mechanical area that we're adding addition to the roof of the garage building, clad in a weathered copper material. Here you see the outline of the stair bulkhead, again clad in glass, to allow some light into that stair as well. And then here, I should put out the original, this is the original and existing car elevator shaft that extends into the rear of the building. And then here, we're replacing that with a new shaft for passenger elevators that's slightly about five feet higher than the current built, the current elevator shaft. And then in front of that, from this elevation, is a new brick enclosure for the, not to code, egress, exposed egress stair that exists behind the building today. And I'll show that in a bit more detail in a minute. Here you see the view from the east, from the west, excuse me, of the proposal. In the rear of the building, as I just mentioned, there's currently an existing car elevator shaft. You can see that here clad in corrugated metal, and also an exposed set of egress stairs that, of course, are not up to current codes. Also, the rear of the townhouse building features an addition here at its lowest level that has also a kind of fiberglass awning or canopy. Here you see that, those two in elevation, and then here as we're proposing. So we're proposing to extend up to 23 feet into the rear yard with a brick addition on the east side to replace the core, current elevator core with a new passenger elevator core clad in corrugated aluminum of a higher grade and- core with a new passenger elevator core clad in corrugated aluminum of a higher grade and scale than what's currently there, but in keeping with what's currently in place. Between these two elements, so passenger elevators and then this new egress stair, there's the elevator lobby. Here, we're looking at using a kind of frosted glass element in the back to provide some light into that elevator lobby, and also to break down the scale of these additions so that you have three clear volumes in the rear. And then again, this stair in the rear that's clad in brick, subtly modulated, again, drawing upon this kind of examples I showed you from kind of Persian architectural traditions. Here are some examples of kind of what we think could be an improved but similar corrugated metal treatment for the elevator core. Here, the rooftop, as it stands today, and you see here also material samples for what we're proposing to add. Here you see an axonometric view of that rooftop today with this existing elevator shaft and the stair. Here, the two new kind of cores in the rear of the building, this glass bulkhead and the weathered copper mechanical room. And then here, an axonometric looking into the rear yard, where, again, you can see the addition that we're proposing here in the, up to 23 feet on the west side, and addition also of the townhouse building here to accommodate a stair with a series of new windows in keeping with kind of residential character of the neighborhood, and two pieces of mechanical equipment that aren't visible from the street on that townhouse building, as well as the shafts that we've described previously.
Is the movement on stair shafts, is that three-dimensional facade, is that going in and out, or is it just a texture or pattern?
It's subtly going in and out. Here, the plan of the roof and the plan of our proposal. And then here, we've constructed a mock-up, of course, indicating the extents of the additions that we're proposing. And then here you see that mock-up in orange, and then here, rendered in the material that we're proposing, here, in this case, the weathered copper. Here, a view from the west, looking at these elements here, you can see them in orange. You see here the weathered copper and then the brick beyond. Here, again, in orange, and then here, the two shafts here, this is the corrugated aluminum, the brick of the stair, and then this is the other glass stair bulkhead. And then here, from Seventy-Fourth Street, between two of the buildings on the street, you can see, actually, a small portion of the facade, as well as this copper-clad mechanical addition. Here, the rooftop addition I mentioned previously that would be on the townhouse building, there already is an addition, and we're proposing to extend it. We're also proposing to push it back as far as we can, so that it's less visible from the street. So we're pushing it back two and a half feet, so that it will be essentially invisible from the street frontage. So really removing kind of previous, the visibility of the previous addition. And here you see, again, the kind of renderings of our proposal.
Good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for a very complete presentation. Other questions from the commission? Otherwise, we have a fair amount of public testimony, which will start now. I will remind everybody, you have three minutes. There's a handy clock to keep track of your time, and I'll ask that you stop abruptly at your three minutes. First is Christabel Goff.
Christabel Goff for the Society for the Architecture of the City. Though originally built as a garage, probably, this building was never intended to look like a garage, if, in 1906, so early in the development of the bill, there was even any convention of what a garage should look like. And so this very early, this very early temple was built in a rather elaborate, classical style. But in a wonderful leap of imagination, defreuse is taking the building in a completely new direction to become a sacred place. This is particularly fitting for New York, because it connects to memories of the work of Arnold Brunner, one of whose innovations was to bring architectural classicism to a new synagogue design for Sheriff Israel in 1897. This departure from Moorish revival models is thought to have been in reference to a very much old archaeological investigations in Jerusalem during the 19th century. The plans for renovation strike a good balance between preservation of the facade and infill that identifies the synagogue and the identity. Faithful that this building, which had been marketed as suitable for conversion to a single-family home, will have a more distinguished future in the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Barbara Zay. And following Barbara will be Andrew Lance.
Zay for the Historic District Council. HDC is glad to see so many elements of these buildings so lovingly restored and was particularly impressed with some of the proposed interventions, including the use of glass bricks on the lotline and the corrugated metal shaft in the rear that honors the building's original industrial use. Our only concerns were regarding the doorway of 177 through 179. We fear that the proposed canopy's location will obscure the beautiful cartouche above the door, so it would suggest that it be moved up to avoid covering up this feature. We also noted in the historic photographs that the door surround, which includes the cartouche, was historically darker in color than the rest of the base, which served to align the base and the entrance with the grand central bay of the building above. Therefore, we would also suggest that this same treatment be reintroduced. And we heard from the applicant on this issue, and it seems that they're working with staff on that. Thank you.
Thank you. So Andrew Lance now, followed by Sarah Kamilatos.
Thank you. I'm Andrew Lance. I'm with the Law Firm of Gibson Dunn, and I represent a number of the residents in the community. On behalf of these property owners, we respectfully express our concern about both applications for certificates of appropriateness. As the commissioners are aware, the Landmarks Committee of Community Board eight previously recommended disapproval of the applications in their entirety, and the full community board passed a resolution affirmatively disapproving the proposed extensions of the rear of these historic landmark properties, and expressed no opinion on the door and the canopy where not sufficient, where insufficient detail was provided by the applicant to afford the public the commentary that they are entitled to. Members of the committee unanimously agreed that the proposed use of corrugated aluminum on the roof additions to the structures and in connection with the proposed massive expansion in the rear of 177 to 179 looked industrial, these are quotes, cold, egregious, jarring, fortress-like, and wholly out of character with the properties and their surroundings. The mostly wooden doors now reflected in the center's latest proposal incorporate design elements found in locations halfway around the world, and while interesting, this highlights the extent to which such designs are inconsistent with the historic special character of these properties. The proposed color schemes for the materials on the facades reject the historic colors shown in archival photographs, and therefore diminish the contrasting historical significance of each landmark building in favor of a bland unifying facade with no connection to the historical hues. And there is a deviation among the colors, even in the slides of this presentation, from a bland gray to a green that resonates with the copper in the roof. The proposed expansion to the rear of 175 East Seventy-Third would involve constructing a 28-foot-high wall immediately abutting and towering over the edge of the balcony at 173 East Seventy-Third, which would intrude on this adjacent landmark that the commission has carefully curated. In addition, the proposal would entirely eliminate the landmark rear yard of 175 East Seventy-Third, a contributing element to the landmark designation. The commission has previously devoted extensive and exacting detail to the rear design and renovations of several other landmark properties on the same block in the vicinity of the property, and should bring the same scrutiny to this proposal. The center's failure to include in its proposal any consideration of the impact on the rear facades in context is grounds for the commission to defer action on the rear expansions pending a much more thorough and sufficient design and context report. And the designations specifically call out the rear yards, the low-rise context, and the uniform presentation of these buildings as a whole as part of the basis for the designation. We urge the commission to reject these proposals or to defer consideration so that much more careful review can be made of the impact on the rear yards, the ornamental details, and all the other matters referred to in our written submission. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Sarah Kamilatos. Sarah, you've requested to speak twice.
I've listed as two separate icons on the agenda, so we wrote separate testimonies for each address. But I'll try to combine them and keep to the time.
I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Sarah Kamilatos, Friends of the Upper East Side Historic Districts. Friends Preservation Committee is pleased to see that subtle facade features of Number 175, such as the round arch third-floor windows and the original window dimensions, are being restored, and that the later-added through-wall vents will be removed, bricked in, and painted to match the existing facade. The committee was also relieved to see that this updated proposal includes fenestration on the rear facade extension, a common visual characteristic of 19th-century residences. The three bays on the first and second floors are reminiscent of the residential use for which this house was constructed, and will maintain that sense, although the use is changing. At 177 to 179, Friends is supportive of the rest, restorative work being undertaken on the south facade as this former garage is transformed into a new religious institution. Respect has been taken to maintain and repair its beaux-arts grandiosity while still accommodating its new use. The main entry is a significant focal point on this facade, and Friends Preservation Committee is supportive of removing the lower wooden addition to the original transom, sporting an elaborate cartouche, and raising the doorway to its original dimensions, including the re-establishment of the two flanking windows and stone base. However, based on the 1940s tax image, it appears that this transom had originally been painted a dark color to match the central triple-height window. In addition to creating a condition closer to the original, a dark surround could enhance the grand entranceway for this new institution. We believe further study of this feature is required. Friends does not oppose the appearance of the aluminum awning, as its modern profile differentiates it from a traditional-looking residential awning. However, its placement might be more successful if it were raised over the ornamented, ornamented wooden transom as to highlight, as opposed to obscure, this feature from the pedestrian perspective. This is a unique proposal for an adaptive reuse, and we are pleased to see innovative touches such as the weaving of the glass bricks into the east and west facades. This is a unique feature that still subtly conveys the religious reverence displayed in more traditional fenestrations such as lead-paned glass without exposing excessive light from the street. In addition to the artistic walnut, in addition, the artistic walnut doors are an appropriate expression of the community's identity and new use for this structure. Friends has supported similar modern door expressions, and we support this addition here. The rooftop mechanical additions, while visible and somewhat hodgepodge in their appearance, will be faced with a variety of materials that will help to avoid the look of a monolithic mass. Though visible, especially over the small scale of the Seventy-Third Street mid-block, Friends finds it's a reasonably successful solution for mechanical additions. Similarly, the project team has taken care to enclose the rear yard in additions in materials that relate to the building's industrial pass while also incorporating standard brick facing. The history of this structure meant that it never had the traditional rear yard configuration, and we do not take issue with the additions to the rear, as they do not extend beyond the plane of the existing car elevator. However, we would have appreciated a more detailed study of the conditions on the interior of this block as a part of the application to better assess the cumulative impact. That being said, we feel that the combination of the brick, frittered glazing, and corrugated aluminum creates a material profile which recalls the building's utilitarian history in a way that does not negatively impact its character. Pending further study of the details of the transom above the main entry and placement of the awning, Friends would favor approval of this application. We appreciate the creative reuse of this distinguished building on a street of other distinguished buildings. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your testimony. Next is Michael Goodkin, and he will be followed by Helen Goodkin.
Anyone who walks down Seventy-Third Street immediately recognizes the neighborhood's special character. It didn't happen by accident. Thanks to this commission and the caring property owners, it is a wonderful collection of carefully preserved structures with historical significance that's been celebrated in The New York Times. What is less obvious is that the property owners have taken the same care with the back of their houses. No corrugated metal anywhere. No one extending back towards the rear property lines. It is wholly inappropriate to allow the applicant to disregard the carefully adhered-to standards. Thank you.
Thank you. Helen Goodkin. She'll be followed by David Musa Zadet.
Commissioners, thank you for letting me attend. Rabbi, it's been very impressive to watch you work this morning. It's, it's the seriousness with which you take your task is quite incredible, which is why, as a neighbor of this building, I'm asking you to please look at the back of this building. It's clear to me that the congregation is very concerned about the facade and the use, but for those of us on the backside, there has been no, it's been improper consideration. The rooftop additions have been described as a hodgepodge, which indeed they are. The back is going to significantly impact the views from our building and our neighbors who've spent a lot of money on their houses. And so I would urge you to ask the congregation to spend as much time on the back as they've spent on the front, and to have respect for their neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. David Musa Zadet, followed by Nazee Moinian.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and the commissioners. My name is David Musa Zadet. I'm a former president of the synagogue. Most of our congregants have their roots in Iran, who came here before the revolution and some after the revolution for the fear of religious persecution. Many families have extended families, their children, their grandchildren, spread across the world, myself included. When they come to New York during the holidays, especially during the most sacred Jewish holidays, being Yom Kippur, we pray on a basketball court. It is unbelievable for us to find ourselves being on a basketball court which is not spiritual, not aspirational. For the last 32 years, as the rabbi said, we have rented a small chapel at Park East Synagogue, and we pray there on Saturdays. We have outgrown that space a long time ago. It took us 30 years to find a proper home for us. We understand that the two buildings are landmark, and we appreciate and respect the fact that they will remain on the street scape as landmark. But joining those two buildings will allow us to have a home that can accommodate us. I wanted to thank you for giving us the consideration to approve our application. Thank you.
Thank you for the testimony. Nazee Moinian, who will be followed by Todd Zeiser.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners. My name is Nazee Moinian, and as a wife, mother of five, and a student of Iranian Studies, PhD student of Iranian Studies at Columbia University and St. Andrews University, I want to give you a personal account of why I think we need a house of worship of our own. For years, my husband and I dressed our kids, all five of them, reminded them of their proper manners, and told them that we're going to the synagogue on the seventh floor, only to be met by first confused and then knowing looks, because they knew better than us that we're going to the gymnasium of buzzing white neon floor, white neon lights and very sterile environment. Every holiday gathering was a struggle between keeping our respect for our dignity and keeping our respect for the surrounding and the gymnasium. I wanted to tell you that we tried our best to make the synagogue our home. We put flowers in the hoops, we put pretty fabrics on the benches, but still it was a gymnasium. And we, we were struggling all this time, and I know there's no shame in having humble beginnings. It's actually the underpinning of an American dream, but the underpinning of an American dream is also progress, and having a sense of finally belonging. belonging. You're commissioned, you're here to preserve the culture of the beauty of that block, and we're here to preserve the beauty of our culture for our generations to come. The two are not mutually exclusive. In fact, I think they can go together seamlessly, harmoniously, and beautifully considering what a great job OMA has done. We will be great neighbors, and this can be a great New York story more than anything else, and one that I'm sure you'll always be proud of. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you for the testimony. Todd Zeiser will be followed by Anthony Engleton. Thank.
Hello. Thanks for the opportunity to speak, and thank you for the detailed presentation that you gave. My wife and I chose the neighborhood that we ended up in, which is on 74th Street, because of the unique look and feel that it has and the confidence that an organization like the Landmark Commission would preserve that unique look and feel, which is why we're here today because in certain respects, we feel that that's not necessarily being the case. What makes a landmark is not just the front facade of a building, but it's the building itself. And the building has four sides, and in particular, a concern that I have and some of my other neighbors have is with the back facade, which is being extended a tremendous amount, and I think will have a very negative impact on many of the neighbors on 74th Street who face that yard, as well as some of the neighbors on 73rd Street on either side. And I think what we'll end up with, once the renovation is done, is nothing less than a fortress that we'll have to look at. And I think it will be bad in terms of light, in terms of visual appeal, and I would ask that you reject the proposal that they're offering based on that. If I have a little more time, the other thing I would add is that I have not heard anybody objecting to the Persian Jewish center coming into the community, and I don't have a problem with it. I don't think anybody in this room has a problem with it. That's not the issue. We welcome them. The issue is some of the changes that they're suggesting making to the building itself. It's not the idea of a center, which is a terrific idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Anthony Engleton, I'm having a hard time reading your name here.
Finkton, that's okay. I live at 168 East 74th Street, north of the proposed structure. Our building backs up to this proposed structure. The Persian Jewish Center would detract from the historic preservation of our lovely Lenox Hill neighborhood, which the Landmarks Preservation Commission seeks to protect. We understand that all the other buildings in the middle of 73rd Street have been required to meet strict landmark preservation standards, including spatial allocations and material usage. From the plans, we understand the structure would be extended 19 feet toward our building, 19 feet, and covered in corrugated metal like a shed in an industrial site. This block on East 73rd Street is a wonderful collection of carefully-preserved structures with historical significance. The other property owners have taken care with the back of their houses. This is a residential neighborhood, not an industrial one. The front of buildings are not the only issue to be taken into account with this particular plan. What happens at the rear is equally important, especially to those who have to look at it. Consideration of neighbors, which the rabbi has pointed out to us, has to be taken into account. This plan is not neighborly. Looking at a wall of sheet metal is not neighborly, not by any stretch of the imagination. I would ask you that you ask the proposals of these plans to reconsider what is happening at the rear of this beautiful structure. Thank you.
Thank you for the testimony. Next is Margaret Greaser.
My name is Margaret Greason. I would like to voice my opposition to the proposals to change the rear and top of the buildings located at 175 East 73rd and 177, 179 East 73rd Street. My husband, daughter, and I have been residents of 168 East 74th Street for over 12 years, and our apartment is in the back of our building on the sixth floor, and almost all of our rooms, all the rooms of our apartment, and those of eight other fellow residents who live in the same apartment line, look at the back of the garage at 179, 177, 179, and the townhouse at 175, and the other townhouses directly west of those. Well, my family and I do not want to lose the light and air that today's proposals, if approved, we hugely curtail. We understand that the proposals at issue today are really about preserving the neighborhood and history of two particular buildings and a unique residential neighborhood in general. Before we were married over 25 years ago, my husband lived on the block, and we were thrilled to purchase our apartment in the area. We walked down that block of East 73rd Street almost yearly, and we revel in the unique historic feel and ambiance of the block. We purchased our apartment mainly because of the idyllic townhouse view and open light that currently floods our home from these uniquely landmarked townhomes. The addition of an extension at the back of 175 East 73rd and 177, 179 East 73rd would remove much of that light and air, but most especially the townhouse ambiance that we do love about our apartment. We urge the commission to deny the proposals they've issued today concerning the rear facades of 175 and 177, 179 East 73rd Street. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there others wishing to testify? No others. I should note that the commission has received seven letters and/or emails in opposition to the proposal, which is part of the record. The community board has divided it into two parts. The front and side facades and roofs of 175 and 177 to 179 East 73rd Street recommend And their second part, Part B as they call it, the rear enlargements of 175, 177, and 179 are disapproved by the community board. I don't -- they give us a 27 to 11 opposed that resolution. Are there any comments that the applicant would wish to respond to? Thank you.
Hi, thank you. Thank you very much. I wanted to clarify the proposal that we're proposing now versus a previous proposal for the rear, and I'll just go back to that portion here. So originally, we had wanted to, we had thought, as we looked to enclose the stair on the west side of the rear, that we would extend the same corrugated metal that exists today on the car elevator over to cover that as well. And we heard some concerns from the community, but also from the landmark staff, that that was too much corrugated metal, that all that new corrugated metal, even though we thought it was in keeping with what was there and the previous industrial heritage of the building. So in response to those concerns, we actually changed the material on the stair portion to brick at that time, and then also clad with this frittered glass, the elevator lobby. So actually, the amount of corrugated metal that we're proposing is less than is there today because the proportion -- I go to the -- here you see the elevator shaft that exists there today. Our proposal actually thins that out slightly and then also covers the side of it in order to enclose the elevator lobby. So there's actually kind of a net loss of corrugated metal, you could say, but we thought it was good to keep that historical feature or materiality still at the rear of the building. And then I go.
The comment was made about the light and air and about people not building their property out towards -- people not building the property out to the rear a lot. You can see from the sketch of the block that a lot of people did build their homes out to the rear lot line, and questions about light and air and the suitability and the character of the area are findings that the BSA would have to make with respect to our request to extend. I recognize the commission is certainly looking at the aesthetics, but there were comments made about light and air, and those questions the BSA would examine as part of their obligation to look at findings. A word about the community board. They approved the front facade 30 to 7. They noted that they hadn't seen a door design, and that's because at the committee level, the community board on a Monday night, we had a glass door design, and the community board thought, said they'd like to see wood, and we did not have a final design two nights later at the full board on Wednesday. You've seen the design of the wood, and I'm sure you can make your own judgment about whether you think it's appropriate or not. But the community was very happy with the front facade, and you can see from the canopy, it's as slim as we could make it and still provide any shelter from the rain.
If you could just clarify one thing, I want to be sure everybody understands this, in the audience as well as around this table. If we were, for instance, if we were to approve the rear yard extensions as you propose it, are you suggesting that it would go through a whole separate hearing and BSA might well disapprove it?
Correct.
Yeah.
The BSA, the test at the BSA is whether it's necessary for the programmatic need of the Persian center, and they look at whether a program could be carried out without the rear extension. You know, your function, of course, is to say whether you think it's aesthetically appropriate. Their function is to say whether it's necessary or whether it adversely affects the character, the light and air of people in the area.
Yet we also look at things like the donut and so forth. So you or anybody on your team, my question would be, talk about that donut a little bit more. You did mention, as it shows here, that some have built out to a property line. What about the space to the right, I guess it is, behind, is it 181, the building there on the corner? Is that open space right there?
Commissioners, if I can just jump in here real quick, just so we can clarify certain jurisdictional --
It's open.
If we can clarify certain jurisdictional issues. This is sort of an unusual situation for us. These are not in historic district. This is a row of individual landmarks. The buildings that are facing 74th Street are not designated. So in a historic district, you are mandated to look at the impacts of proposed work on a building on the adjacent buildings. For individual landmarks, you are not required. That is not a finding. Obviously, you can when they're next to each other, and often you do. So the issues of sort of the donut are, we're not really, I mean, in addition, as you know, we don't regulate light and air, and issues about what affects outside of our jurisdiction are also something that we don't look at. So in this case, the concerns about the donut are really not really before us. It's really about the impact of the proposed work on this building, on both buildings individually, and to the extent that you choose to look at its impact on an adjacent individual landmark, you know, you can do that as well.
Thank you, and that's good clarification. I sort of interrupted your rebuttal or comment on the testimony, if you'd like more, please.
I was explaining the community board vote was 30 to 7 in favor of the front facade. They did, said they couldn't comment on the door because they hadn't seen the design because we couldn't do it in two days, and they hadn't seen the canopy, which you've seen. Yes, they had concerns about the rear facade, but we made a lot of changes in material that Jason just explained to you as a result of those comments and of your staff's comments.
Okay. Good. Thank you. No more questions?
I have a question. I'm sorry, John.
Question for, I think for staff, which is the existing corrugated material. How long has that been on the back of that building?
The corrugated metal is not described in the designation report, so it's a bit of a guessing game. When I was there on site, it looked something from the '60s or '70s, maybe '60s, but it's definitely a later addition, yeah.
Okay. At this point, unless there are further questions, we'll close the hearing with the vote. Second? All in favor? Any opposed to closing the hearing? No. So the hearing is now closed, and the commissioners will now start to talk about their thoughts. Yes?
I find everything acceptable about it except for the front doors. I'd rather see a more restorative approach to the entry doors.
Okay. Michael Goldblum?
I think it's a fantastic project. I think it's fantastic on many levels. I think it's fantastic that this building, as Christabel noted, which was designed to look like a much more public building than it was, is now kind of finding its match in a remarkable way. I think that it's fantastic in that it's restoring the townhouse. I think that the balance of modest but creative, modern interventions is totally spot-on. I don't think that it in any way detracts from the landmark buildings, either of them. I think that the front doors personally are fine, since the front doors were not in existence, are not in existence. I think it's appropriate to take a more contemporary approach. I think the suggestion of several of the testimonies about relocating the canopy or the marquee to be above the decorative cartouche is one that they could consider with staff, but I don't think it's something for which I would withhold an appropriateness vote. I think that the hot button appears to be the rear yard, and I think for that, the block diagram provided is crystal clear. And as Mark said, it's not something that we would consider because of the individual landmark nature of the buildings, but nevertheless, I think it's, I think, you know, even if we were considering that, I think that the fact that the block is, like many on the Upper East Side, very heavily incurred into what normally would be the donut, especially at the end, and especially since this building had most of these structures for many, many years, protruding more or less to the extent that they are, I don't find any of the extensions to be inappropriate with the buildings or with each other. And if this were a district, I wouldn't, I don't think I'd have a problem with that either. I think it's fantastic, and it's very creative, and more power to them.
Thank you. Addie?
Yes.
I concur. I think that the applicant has expressed incredible sort of respect and interest and admiration in a sense for the building that exists for both of them, for the historic buildings, and seemed to be really dedicated to their preservation, taking care of them, kind of beautifying them, and living in them at the highest and with the greatest intent. So I think, and I think that that's expressed in everything that you've done, in the restorative work that you've done for the, that you're proposing for the townhouse, as well as your kind of design considerations for the rear of the building, the materiality, the kind of the details of the design, inflections like the corbeling and the glass block in the sideyard windows. The only question I have is on the, this is going to sound strange, but on the roof mechanical of the townhouse, the one that's furthest, you know, back, and how big that actually is, it just, I'm not sure if it's as, you'll say, or you won't say at this hearing anymore, but perhaps staff can say if in fact there's been, it's been checked that it's actually required for it to be as big as it is. It just feels a little bit cumbersome there. But otherwise, I just think everything about the way that you've approached this project is with tremendous respect and attention to detail, and thank you.
Thank you. Any others wishing? Yeah, John?
I want to actually speak specifically in favor of the front doors. I want to actually speak specifically in favor of the front doors. You know, we, it's kind of ironic. I mean, we watch buildings being converted from religious use to a secular use and taking off features that, like stained glass windows that are actually amazing. And here, we're, there is no original material in that area, and we're replacing it with something that has a spiritual reference for these people. So I think it would be bizarre for us to say, no, you can't, you can't do that when there's no original material being removed. So I am particularly in favor of the, of the doors. And in addition to that, someday, if this building, I doubt this will ever happen, but if someday it went back to secular use, at that point, we could ask someone to, the owner to restore it to its original look. So I'm fine with it. I think it's a terrific project.
Thank you.
I was going to say one more thing, because I echo both, all of your sentiments. I just want to say, I'm so happy for you, for the church, the institution, to be able to finally find a synagogue, to be able to finally find a home that you can, that you have already embraced and beautified, and where all of the parishion, congregants, parishioners can, can come and collectively in worship. It's a wonderful thing. So congratulations to you, and thank you again for all of your thoughtfulness, and thank you to OMA for really putting, as you said, being so respectful and integrating so many aspects of the existing infrastructure, materials that are important to the, to the church, and also some modernity in a very, very thoughtful, contextual way.
Thank you. Anyone, yes, Diana?
Yeah, I just want to echo what everybody had to say, and, you know, it was great seeing, instead of seeing synagogue turned into something else, to see a, in this case, a garage becoming a synagogue is terrific, and the care and the way they've gone about it with the design, I think is terrific, and the preservation elements. I'm also in favor of the door as presented, because I think that having these elements, which are small, but I think really very, very appropriate from a Persian sensibility, are really great in this case, so.
Good. Good. Anyone else? I think there's a fair amount of praise that I will not try to either summarize, but simply glom onto and say, I also thought it was a brilliant presentation and a terrific solution, adaptive reuse of, of a garage. Amazing. I am, I just want to note that there was a fair amount of testimony concerning the rear of the building, and particularly maybe the metal, even though it's there now, and it will be reduced. And I, for my own sake, I don't think we're going to put this into the record, but I just, there's been so much talk by the applicants and the team there of respecting the neighbors, et cetera, that I would just suggest that you continue to think about that material as you move forward, and maybe, working with staff, you might adjust it to something that seems a little more in keeping with the Upper East Side Historic District, even though this is not in that district, it's still in the Upper East Side family of, of context. So with that, Wellington, I think you have the task of a long read.
Yes.
Thank you.
In a matter of 175 East Seventy-first Street, an individual landmark, application is to modify the existing rooftop addition, install mechanical equipment and replace windows. I recommend approval, finding that the work at the roof will not damage or destroy any significant architectural features of the building, that although the one new, one-story rooftop addition will be installed along the full width of the building, it will be set back from the corners, then the existing nonhistoric rooftop addition will be less visible than that addition when viewed from across the street, and will not overwhelm the small scale of this roll house, that the glass and metal skylight will only be minimally visible when viewed across the street and will not call attention to itself, that the white painted brick of the rooftop addition will be in keeping with materials of rooftop accretions often found on buildings of this age and style, and will harmonize with the brick material of the building's facade, that the existing rear facade has been altered significantly, and the proposed changes to the nonhistoric massing and fenestration of the upper stories will not damage or destroy any significant architectural historic features, that the proposed rear yard addition will not be visible from any public thoroughfare, that the proposed simple design of the rear addition featuring common brick and punch windows openings is in keeping with the scale and residential character of a roll house.
No opposed? That part of, of that application is approved. Now you keep reading.
In a matter of 177, 179 East Seventy-third Street, an individual landmark, the application is to construct rooftop and rear yard additions and replace a garage door with new glass and metal infill. I recommend approval in regard to, with regard to the alteration to the front facade. I find that the entrance was altered prior to the destination with the loss of piers and introduction of a wide garage door, and that the proposed work will not damage or destroy any significant features of this individual landmark, that the reconfiguration of the main entrance with the reinstallation of the granite base would pierce, and one-over-one double-hung windows framing a new pair of monumental wood doors will bring the facade closer to its historic appearance, that the remaining historic entrance infill, including transom paneling, framing, and decorative workwork, will be restored and integrated into the new entrance design, that the new piers will align with the existing historic vertical framework and will match it in terms of materials, dimensions, and detailing, that the scale and materials of the new pair doors will relate well to the historic building while create a new, while creating a new identity for the building as a place of worship, that the proposed canopy will fit within the entrance masonry opening without altering any architectural details, and that its minimalist design and metal finish will not call undue attention to itself, that the proposed light fixtures to be located in the canopy at the entrance threshold are well-integrated and will have a discreet presence, that the signage consisting of engraved letters will be installed on flat, non-decorative, new install, newly-installed masonry, and that the placement and modest size of the, of the signs will not obstruct or detract from any significant architectural historic features of the building. With regard to the alteration to the sidewalls, I find that it is not uncommon for buildings to have lotline windows on secondary facades, that the alteration to the visible east and west lotline walls consisting of installation of glass bricks in a subtle woven pattern will not alter the character of these walls as a secondary facade, and will only require the selective removal of existing common brick, that the glass brick windows will only be visible from limited oblique angles and will not detract from the architectural or historic features of the building, that the removal of a layer of nonhistoric masonry from the east facade at the lower levels will restore the historic plane of the facade. With regard to the rooftop additions, I find that the rooftop stairs, bulkhead, and mechanical enclosure and railing will only be visible over secondary facades at oblique angles or from a distance, and mostly against the backdrop of taller buildings, and therefore will not detract from the scale and massing or special features of this individual landmark, that the copper cladding of the mechanical enclosures relates to the historic copper cladding found, found at the building's corners will blend well with the color and material palette of the building, and will not call undue attention to itself, that the simply-designed black metal railing is, is consistent with other utilitarian rooftop accretions that is varied, on this very block in terms of height, materials, and finishes. With regard to the rear addition, I find that the removal of the rear fire escape will not eliminate any significant architectural features, that the rear addition will only be visible at an oblique angle from the west on East Seventy-first Street and through a gap in the street wall on East Seventy-fourth Street, and will not be visible when viewed directly across the street, that the garage building currently features a full-height rear elevator addition and exterior fire stairs related to its utilitarian nature, and the proposed addition will fit within this context and will not significantly alter the scale and character of the garage, that the varied materials of the rear facade, including corrugated metal, fretted glass, and sculptural brick, will help to break up the apparent mass of the addition, and will reference the building's original materials and garage use.
All in favor? Any opposed? No opposed. You're approved.
Okay, commissioners, we have one more matter before us today in the Preservation Department public meeting agenda. This is item number one, proposed rulemaking under the City Administrative Procedure Act, scheduling a public hearing on revisions to the draft rules. An omnibus rules amendments, proposed amendments to Chapter Two, Three, Five, Seven, and Eleven of Title sixty-three of the Rules of the City of New York, consisting of amendments, consolidation, reorganization of existing rules, and new rules, including in Chapter Two, amendments to Sections Two-eleven through Two-thirty-five, new rules concerning barrier-free access, sidewalks, and excavation, and Chapter Three, repeal of the chapter and its reorganization as amended into Chapter Two, and Chapter Five, amendments to Section Five dash oh-one through Five dash oh-three, and new Section Five dash oh-four, and Chapter Seven, amendments to Sections Seven oh-one through Seven oh-six, and in Chapter Eleven, amendments to Sections Eleven dash oh-one through Eleven dash oh-six. This was originally calendered in January twenty-third, a motion to calendar, excuse me, was granted January twenty-third, two thousand and eighteen, a public hearing, which was presented on March twenty-seventh, two thousand and eighteen, and this was discussed at the public meeting of May twenty-ninth, two thousand and eighteen. No action was taken at that time.
Commissioners, we wanted to have a brief discussion today about providing the public an opportunity to comment on the revisions to the proposed rules that we discussed with you at the May twenty-ninth public meeting. Let me briefly just sort of summarize where we are in this rulemaking. On January twenty-third, two thousand and eighteen, you voted to commence the rulemaking on this whole rules package. The procedures for the rulemaking are governed by the City Administrative Procedures Act, which requires one hearing and with thirty days' notice of that public hearing. The draft rule was published in the city record on January thirtieth. The public hearing was held on March twenty-seventh. The commission held a briefing on February thirteenth, public meeting, where we discussed it in detail. There were a number of public information sessions the staff held, both before the hearing and subsequent to it. On May twenty-ninth, Cory and I briefed you on the testimony and comments and the staff's proposed responses and changes. We distributed a memorandum, a memoranda discussing the specifics and the five areas of major change, restoration, additions, windows, cast iron vault lights, and references to no-style buildings. The May twenty-nine presentation is available for review if you, if you have any questions. At that meeting, there was uniform support for the proposed rules and the changes. In addition, though, a few commissioners asked whether there could be an opportunity for the public to review the revised text and/or whether there could, could or should also be an opportunity for the public to comment on the revised text. No decision was made at that time. Since then, staff has discussed the matter and reviewed options with Vice Chair Bland. Because we are, we are in a formal rulemaking, the only venue for receiving additional testimony and comment would be to advertise and hold a hearing through the CAPA process. With this as background, let me turn it over to the vice chair for his discussion.
Thank you, Mark. So I think the rules proposal is very significant and important to the commission and to preservation generally, and frankly, good governance. It's just good government to have these rules, in my judgment. It allows citizens, especially those, particularly those in smaller and newer historic districts, to better understand how LPC works and make it more transparent and frankly, easier to work with. In addition to the efficiency and transparency of having more user-friendly, better organized, and extensive rules, the commission has also adopted and announced additional transparency measures to allow the public greater access to applications and approvals. These transparency measures include the Permit Application Finder, which is an interactive web map that, for the first time, allows the public to see graphically where LPC permits have been filed and issued, and what that work entails. Also, the commission has also enhanced its online permit application search, which now gives the public the ability to search by community, district, and work type. It is, it has been somewhat troubling for me that the advocates for preservation, so active and so vital a part of city building in this dynamic and ever-changing city, were not necessarily advocates for LPC in this rules issue. So I thought that that should change, if we could, if we could effect that change, and if at all possible, that during my very limited time here as vice chair, I wanted to begin that change if possible. So as Mark noted, a few commissioners expressed some sentiment for allowing the public to see the changes, and if possible, to comment on them, although this was not necessarily something we had to do. I have given the issue a lot of thought and consideration and support the idea of finding a way to allow the public to comment on the changes. The rules were good, and the changes make them even better. I understand from Mark that due to the requirements of CAPA permitting additional public comment means going through the formal CAPA hearing process again. Although having an additional hearing will mean that we cannot take action on the rules until later, maybe a few months later, I think the better course is to have additional feedback on these changes. So I propose that we vote now to have the staff publish the revised draft rules in the city record as soon as it can, as it can, and announce a public hearing. I am aware that we would be publishing the revised rules in August, and some interested parties may be away. That is why I propose that we hold a hearing on the revised text in early October. Could I have a second to that motion? A second. All in favor? Any opposed? No opposed. So we will proceed to have a second hearing on the rules, and particularly on this revised set of rules that have been drafted up by the, by the staff, and that will now become public as well, as I understand it, Mark.
So we anticipate the, the rule, the draft rules being revised, draft rules being published in the city record next week, so it'll be early, so people will have probably over sixty days to review it. We'll also -- We'll also be distributing a compared document that shows the changes we are making against the proposal as originally proposed back in January, so it should be very clear what all the changes are.
Distributing to the public.
Yeah, it'll be available on our website, people can pull it down.
Technically speaking, we're, how does this, what's happening? Are we dropping the first application and starting a new one?
It's really a continuation of the first one, but because, it's a sort of, as a technical matter, what people will see, when they see the revised rules in the city record, will be a whole new rule thing. It won't just, it won't be the changes superimposed on what was proposed in January. That's why we're providing this red line version.
So technically, it's starting from scratch?
No, in the purest legal sense, it's one continuous thing, but in terms of the record, for example, it would be.
Has this ever been done before by the commission?
It hasn't been done at the Landmarks Commission before, and, you know, nor have we sort of engaged in this process in such an extensive way before, but I can't speak to how other city agencies, when they're adopting major changes to the building code or other things, whether they require, you know, additional opportunity.
Thanks.
So again, just to emphasize, this is inefficient, you might call it, but we haven't had these, these rules, changes in place ever, so my thought was, in order to make them more popular, and I'm guessing and hoping that that is what comes of this, that we'll have much greater support for these rule changes by having this inefficient, if you will, but second hearing, second crack at it. So I think those changes, so many of which were responded to through the extensive testimony that we have, have had, that we will have, I hope, much greater support, and I think that's only good for preservation in this city as well as for the Preservation Commission.
Not for nothing, but I think the inefficiency, when it comes down to it, in the bigger picture, the inefficiency is trivial, which is to say, is, I think it's all of our attentions that this commission is going to be around for a long, long, long time, so a two-month, four-month delay is hardly tragic, and I'm happy to put my time into that revised process and invest myself in the inefficiency, and I think we all agree on that.
I might add that our time is de minimis compared to what we've foisted now a little bit on the staff, but nonetheless, I.
I wouldn't really pejoratively call it inefficiency. I mean, it may extend the time, but, you know, as you are really, as we all feel, and what you're saying is, we're really doing actually what we like all of our applicants to do, which is make sure that they get proper community input, so that in the end, our end product will be a reflection of not only what we believe is important, but that it will be embraced as well by them.